All right, half a day. The Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, October 23rd. The time now is 9:03. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and accommodating the Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. A notice for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, October 16th and Wednesday, October 21st. We will be hearing the, on the bill number 404-35, COR introduced by Senator Regine Biscoley, an act to add a new section 48104b5 and section 48104e, both of chapter 48, Title 10, and to amend section 62104b of chapter 62, Title 21, all of the Guam code entered, relative to prohibiting any further use of septic tanks on certain lots located in the groundwater protection zone, regardless of whether said lots are part of prior subdivision. The general rules of this hearing, this Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff. I will be muted all and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by myself. Members of the committee and/or noncommittee members wishing to speak may indicate their desire to meet through the in-app chat feature. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by me before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Committee members will be allowed to post a question to an individual testifying. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the bill, bill number 404-35. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of the general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing by my host. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in other activity during the hearing. But if you need to take a drink and you're eating a snack, I have, there's, I have no problem with that one, all right? Failure to maintain invisibility may cause your removal from the meeting livestream. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined us today. And looking at the screen, I have, I have the author of the bill, Senator Regine Biscoley. I have Senator Telo Tidaway. I have Senator Will Castro. I have Senator Jim Moylan. I have Senator Therese Terlay. And I have, let me see on the other screen, because there's quite a few participating today. I have, no, I think that that's about it. I also, we were also, have the privilege and are joined today by former senators, Senator Simon Sanchez. We have also Senator, former Senator Carlotta Young-Gerl. I hope I didn't miss anybody. And we're also joined by the Director of Department of Culture, Chelsea. Thank you for joining us. We have also the different folks from the industries. You know, we have Claire Delgado. We have Mr. John Duennas from the Weary. We have John Jensen, Dave Dimon, one of the fighters for the protection of our environment. We have also EPA folks here. We have Mr. Nick Lee. I'm just going, I'm just trying to glance over everybody. But I know that as we go along, I'll recognize everybody. And if I miss anybody, please, there was never, there's no intention to offend anybody. I would ask now that Senator Regine Biscoley, the author of the bill, will give her opening statement.
Senator Lee. Sismasi, yes, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
You're good.
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you, Sismasi, Mr. Chair, for convening this hearing on a measure that's part of an agenda, a legislative vision that is all about securing our environmental and our economy, our environment and our economy, both today and for future generations to come. Bill 404-35COR is just one in a suite of measures that shines the spotlight on the Northern Guam Lenz Aquifer, or NGLA. And I want to thank our partners who've helped with all these bills, including Dr. Jensen, Dr. Nathan Hibana at the Water and Environmental Research Institute of the Western Pacific, Weary, Director Jack Hattig at the Tomorrowland Trust, the NGLA Technical Advisory Group, the Guam Waterworks Society, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, and many others. Mr. Chair, this aquifer that we have took millions of years to form. And the natural resource that we have right under our feet is pretty incredible. This drinking water supply has sustained lives and livelihoods for centuries, but it isn't invincible. A host of issues are making our aquifer less healthy and less commercially viable. And one clearly documented problem from scientists and experts monitoring the aquifer is nitrate contamination. Bill 404 recognizes the service, the studies, the technical reports, irrefutable data that all show a growing trend of nitrates in our water wells. One major cause for this rise in contamination is also plain as day, the number of septic tanks that are leaching over the aquifer. That is why this measure calls fewer of these waste storage systems over what Guam law calls the quote "groundwater protection zone," or GPZ, the portion of our island already established as the area of greatest concern and risk to our aquifer. And Mr. Chair, perhaps now is a good time to lay out some plain facts surrounding this bill. First, restrictions already exist on which parcels of land can have septic tanks legally installed over the GPZ. Today, even without this bill being enacted, most landowners with less than a half acre cannot build a septic tank for their planned farm, home, or business. This measure simply takes away the lone exception to this rule, which some consider to be a loophole for smaller lots established through parental subdivisions. Second, lawful agreements and permits to install septic tanks over this area that were executed prior to Bill 404's enactment would be grandfathered in. And I'll repeat that. Lawful agreements and permits installed to install septic tanks over this area that were executed prior to the bill will be grandfathered in. The legal protection commonly referred to as the quote "commerce contracts clause" remains in effect for everyone who is playing by today's rules. And I hope that our Attorney General, if he's able to join us, may be able to expound on some of these points. But I also want to take a moment to explain the true motivation behind this bill, because there is a lot at stake. And if our hearing host can bring up slide number one. Thank you so much. And what we're, what we're seeing here is the analysis of nitrate contamination on just 10 of our drinking water wells presented at the Weary Guam Hydrologic Survey Workshop earlier this year. The numbers highlighted in yellow show that in 2019, 70% of survey drinking water sources have nitrate levels so elevated that GWA and other regulators will now need to invest in further monitoring and mitigation work. GWA estimates that as many as 20 wells could reach this level of concern within the next two decades. But we won't have to wait that long for drastic consequences if we do nothing. If we take a look at the first cell highlighted in red, this shows that in just nine years, nitrate contamination will take at least one of our drinking water wells offline and two more a decade later, because the pollution is higher than the federal limits. Essentially, the water from these wells is too contaminated to drink. As stated in Bill 404's fiscal note, GWA could pay $2 million every time it needs to replace a drinking water well. And there are other financial impacts to GWA and to our ratepayers. Any contamination above acceptable federal limits can result in costly fines and additional treatment systems. This avoidable and additional expense will directly affect water rates. And a majority of times, that affects the most vulnerable in our community. There's also an ultimate price to pay for polluting our aquifer. And that's killing off the entire aquifer as a water source for good. None of our water wells exist in a vacuum. They're all part of this labyrinth of underground caves and rivers. Pollution in one area will never just stay isolated. The cost of losing 80% of Guam's drinking water cannot be calculated. It will represent an irreversible decline in our quality of life. It will mean that Guam will be fundamentally less self-sufficient. And it will forever saddle our people to solve the problem of how we can supply safe water to our families. But getting rid of this one exception to who can build septic tanks by treating this one class of landowners the same way that we treat everyone else who live above the aquifer, we can take this important step to protecting this resource for years to come. Mr. Chair, in closing, this bill also considers that Guam is in the middle of an economic depression. And we're currently living in what the CDC classifies as a quote "large-scale community transmission of COVID-19." A drop in the access of clean water or spike in the cost of our water bills would only make this public health and economic crisis worse. And I hope that no matter how you feel about this measure, we can all agree that a strong future requires a protected aquifer. Because once it's lost, it cannot be replaced. Sismasi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Lee. We will now begin with testimony from Dr. Jensen from UG Weary and followed by Dr. Nathan Hibana. All right, Dr. John Jensen, sir? See if we can get you unmuted first.
Okay. I'm kind of slow with these controls here. Well, thank you for the invitation to contribute to the public discussion. And I am grateful to have the opportunity to help contribute to good, informed decision-making. So I'd like to start by just saying that our role as scientists, of course, is to provide the policymakers and the regulators and the general public with accurate, useful information and to provide reliable advice as to what the implications of the findings are that we make. We will defer to the policymakers on how to fix the problems and defer to the public on what's the acceptable solution to the problems. So I'm going to defer to my subject-matter expert, which is Dr. Hibana. And I spend my time just providing a little bit of perspective. Dr. Hibana has been studying the, with his student assistants and colleagues, which included the late Dr. Joe Rouse, who left us last year, who was an expert in not only groundwater contamination, but wastewater treatment. Dr. Hibana's been studying the trends and spatial patterns of nitrate in the groundwater. And it's complicated, because the aquifer, the plumbing of this aquifer is complicated. And I'll let him explain those complications. And he has an ongoing research program to identify the trends and spatial patterns of nitrate and can enlighten you on that. Now, we've also done work in the past, and Dr. Rouse was looking at things like these household sewage treatment facilities, kind of a supercharged septic tank, which does more than the usual septic tank. And we also have ongoing work that has been done in identifying the distribution of septic tanks and the concentration to map these septic tanks. So we've got the basis of information for studying the problem. But I would like to add that there's still a lot of information to be done, to be gathered, and a lot of study to be done to identify exactly what the sources and distribution of nitrate in the aquifer is. And I'm, I guess what I want to say is, is we want to be careful that we, as we proceed step by step, we're taking into consideration all of the impacts of the approach we take and that we continue to study the problems and sources and look for alternative solutions, or not necessarily alternative solutions, but complementary solutions that can help to reduce the input of nitrate, help to assess the impact of nitrate and find optimum solutions for everybody concerned. So with that, I'll defer to Dr. Hibana to explain not only the, what we found about nitrate, but the limitations of our knowledge and the unknown aspects that we're still working on. Because I think it's important that we understand the limitations of our scientific knowledge as well as the things that we're confident in.
All right, Dr. Jensen. So we have Dr. Hibana give testimony now? If you can unmute Dr. Nathan.
You, okay. Thank you. I wanted to share my screen. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, great. Now, I don't really want to, you know, we're going to present this next week in the advisory council meeting. But my, my research here in this slide, I don't want to steal my students' presentation here. But do you see this right here? Are you all seeing this?
I think everybody should be able to see it, sir.
Okay, great. You know, I started in this project with the nitrate study. We were springing off Mo McDonald when she first did the nitrate trends analysis. And she followed it with going around, mapping all the houses that are septic and non-septic. And so, but she left that time to move to Florida. And I happened to be around and I took over the project of taking GPS and mapping. And now what you're seeing there, the ones in red are what we believe are, they're non-sewered. So you can see how peppered it is all over. And the ones in blue, we've confirmed them to be sewered. And the ones in light blue, we think they're sewered. But we, it hasn't been verified. But since they're close to a sewer main, we, we, we think they're, they're part of the sewer system. We just didn't have enough good data to. But you can see here how much we've developed over the aquifer and where we lag with the system and how we can, you know, how nitrates may be a threat to our groundwater system. So you could imagine how septic tanks are just, and if, and some of them may not be developed very well and can be just spewing down there. And especially in our primary areas, one, the major concern are, the big producer is right here, if you, in the middle of the map, near the whole, where the golf course is indebted. We have, it produces about 20 million gallons per day of water. And so that's about half of the total 40. So I want to show you something else. It's a, earlier Senator Lee talked about 84 or 85, but now we've updated it to 84. We've looked, we've looked at it carefully. 69 are increased, are really increasing. But we are seeing some of this linear trend method that we're, we're using that Mo had start, Moran McDonald had started. And, but 15 appear to be flattening. So, but it's still a lot that are increasing. And some of them are increasing, but don't have much of a slope to it. Let me continue on. So you'll see something like this. Now, our data can go all the way back to 1986. And we see where in blue, we have McDonald's study where sometimes you only have four data pieces. And it shows that it's increasing. And then it's followed by something here in black. This is the new data after Moran's study that it's showing that it really is increasing. And then some had shown it was decreasing significantly. And then with more data throughout all the years, it shows that it's not decreasing as bad as it had previously. So good data is making us have a better view of what is really happening. And so when we look at something that Senator Lee was showing, sometimes we, we have to also consider, for example, the degrees of freedom, like this one in 2019 is high, but we only have two data set to do the analysis and/or two points there versus something like 68. So we also have to find a way to sort that. Here's another one that we're seeing. So in F13, that was one of those hot wells back then. This was in, this one's in Machinaw. Now with new data, appears to be not increasing. So, and then we also have some with no new data. And we're able to show that. Here's the example of one I was talking about, that in the McDonald's study, earlier study, it had an increasing nitrate prediction there using a linear trend. And then in blue, right here.
I'm sorry, or Mr. Chair, is it possible for us to make the slides a little bit larger, please? We've had a request to do that. And I'm having, I'm also having trouble seeing them.
All right, let me, let's see. Dr. Hibana, can you make it larger there on your side or?
Oh, geez. I don't really know. I got this super widescreen and I haven't figured out how to control that. All right, wait, let me see. How about I stop share? And then I'll try to reshare it, not as a PowerPoint presentation. Give me a second, please.
All right, not a problem, please. Yeah, I was struggling to read it also.
Senator, can I, can I make a statement?
Yes, yes, Mr. John, yes.
I, I see Dr. Hibana going through the data. I wanted to ask a few questions about the data. Is that possible while he's on the screen?
All right, okay. But right before you do that, I'd like to also recognize another colleague, the two colleagues that have just joined us, Senator Sabina Perez and Senator Kelly Marsh Titan. Go ahead, John, go ahead and ask. Because I know you're very specific to Hibana, but I wanted to open up as soon as we get two other testimonies in. Then I was going to ask, open up the window for questions to these folks. If you want to hold on to that one, John.
Well, the reason, the reason I wanted to ask a question is because once Mr. Hibana's done, then, or Dr. Hibana will have to go back to his slide to be able to ask a question. But I just wanted to find out from Dr. Hibana that he mentioned a decreasing occurrence of nitrates in Machinaw. And I wanted to know if there's a link between the fact that there are no septic tanks and leaching fields up in Machinaw to the fact that it's decreasing?
Is my mic still on?
Yes, yes, it's still on, Dr. Nathan. And that's a very good question. If there's no leaching fields, how does it, how do you decrease?
Well, you know, sometimes you'll find, this is, this is what I'm mapping. Not all wells, not all, not all septic tank areas will have, will show wells that are responding to this, what we think. Right? There are some areas where there are septic tanks all over the place. It's in an area where it's full of septic tanks and there's a well there. And the nitrate levels are in the twos and threes. And the US EPA regulation is at 10, right?
I wanted, I just wanted to point out that in the state of the aquifer study, 2020, it said that a significant source of pollution of the aquifer comes from not septic tanks and leaching fields, but in fact, it comes from leaking sewer lines. And that in the same, right? And in the same, I guess, the same text under sewage threat, the fact that, that the first 40 to 60 feet of the aquifer acts as a area where the leaching liquids from septic tanks are treated. So I just don't see that consistency between your conclusions and the conclusions, or at least the state of the aquifer in 2020 under sewage threat.
Yes. What I was trying to say was also in areas where there are sewers and there, there happens to be some elevated levels of nitrates as well. So it's, and this is a point where Dr. Jensen comes in and talks about how the way the top layer, the epicarse of the aquifer and, and the ways our sewer or our septic tank system is getting captured on that layer. And then right beneath that is a more hardened layer of limestone. And that there might be enough nitrification process that would bring it into the full completion of the nitrification where it turns it back into nitrates or nitrogen, back into, you know, nitrogen in the nitrogen cycle. Where, where there's dissolved oxygen in the waters, the nitrates are pretty resistant to change. Where there's no oxygen in the waters, it will proceed on with the bacteria breakdown and the consumption. There's no more oxygen for the bacteria to take. So it takes on the nitrates oxygen and then it proceeds on to produce the nitrogen gas.
So one more statement, Dr. Hibana, before I mute myself. And that is, I've, I was a good friend of John Mink when he was alive and he was studying groundwater on Guam. And in our conversations, and you can refute this if I'm wrong, but he mentioned that a lot of the nitrates that are occurring in our groundwater were contributed by the decomposition of organic matter. And he said, now, you know, he's not here to defend himself. But he said that the decomposition of Tanantang, in which we have, you know, oodles of in northern. But he said that, uh, the decomposition of Tanang Tang, in which we have, you know, oodles of in northern, northern Guam. Results in the, in, in, in increasing the nitrate levels. In our aquifers, uh, and so, you know, I, I don't see anything. In, in the papers that I see that acknowledges that, but maybe, maybe he made a mistake. But, uh, you know, maybe you could address that.
All right, John, and then thank you, John. Um, Dr. Nathan, if you want to just go ahead and wrap it up and then we can get to everybody else that's gonna be testifying, please.
Okay. Now, can you see this?
A lot better. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that earlier. Um, the, the, the blue line here was the old trend line that, uh, McDonald. For the data set that she had from back then, that went from eighty-six to ninety-nine. And then right here around two thousand. You know, if we did the same trend analysis throughout the whole data from what we have now. It looks like it's still increasing, but it's increasing less. But if we just look at the whole data. It, the linear trend analysis, in some cases, those sixteen wells, was I, was that what I said? About nineteen percent of the, the increasing trend showed this type of. It was increasing, so this kind of, 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 um, data set show that. This is typical of the fingerprint of the presence of nitrate that. For what is going on down there and it's causing it to increase. And then it levels off at some point in time, like it shows over here. Uh, it's actually flattening out. That means something in the system came along and caused it to increase. And then it's reached its maximum and it had plateaued. So if it was to increase again, there's, that means there's probably more introduction from another source. To cause it to increase again, but it's not doing that. It appears to even be somewhat flattening here. So those are the things we're seeing. And, and you'd be surprised also about what we're trying to say about septic tanks and. Its sources, what, what the law, what they're trying to push though is. To just try to eliminate putting anything into the aquifer is the way I understand it. Uh, and, and control the way because we, 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 if we go back to the first slide, this is our situation. And the, the worst case is that if we have a high density. Um, area, that's the one that's threatening. Is the high density of in, input of nitrates into the aquifer and then there's a well nearby.
All right, thank, thank you. Uh, is, is, is that all your testimony, uh, Dr. Nathan?
I, I, I'll stop there unless you guys have any, uh, questions.
No, not, not at this point. We're gonna move along to, um, Ms. Vanji Luon from GWA, um. If you can go ahead and take off your screen there, uh, Dr. Nathan.
Yes. Sorry.
No problem.
Stop share.
Um, Dr. Na- uh, Vanji Luon from GWA, are you, I'm looking for you on this screen here. There you go, Vanji, go for it.
Um, Miguel Berdallio, our general manager expresses his, um, disappointment that he couldn't be with us today. However, uh, I'm here to present our testimony. Hafaday Senator and all the senators here and all the participants of this very important hearing. The Guam Water Works appreciates the opportunity to provide comments to Bill four oh four dash thirty-five. GWA is supportive of the intent of the bill to ensure improving of the management of Guam's sole source aquifer. For the eighty percent of Guam's population. Aquifer protection is critical to managing Guam's drinking water production and distribution. Over the last few years, GWA has worked collaboratively with Guam EPA and the University of Guam, Wieri. The Department of Defense and other stakeholders in improving management of the Northern Guam Lens Aquifer. These efforts include such activities as cleaning up illegal dump sites in Northern Guam villages. Rehabilitating existing and constructing new aquifer observation wells. And improving long-term sustainability of the aquifer monitoring program. GWA has also done its best to financially support Wieri's comprehensive monitoring program. Which we hope the legislature will continue to do as well. Bill four oh four dash thirty-five is aligned with these efforts. This bill reinforces existing regulations regarding the lot size criteria for the use of individual wastewater disposal systems. Or septic tank systems above the NGLA. This bill mitigates the impact of the NGLA from increased numbers of septic tanks on lots smaller than one-half acre. Which could increase the amount of nitrate released to our groundwater. The law does not eliminate the approval of parental subdivisions, nor does it prevent families from distributing parcels to their family members. The bill does reinforce what is already existing in current regulations. GWA believes passage of this bill will decrease the impact of contaminants. From septic tank usage above the NGLA and within the groundwater protection zone. Currently, the vast majority of the hundred and twenty GWA production wells are located within the GPC. Monthly monitoring data is provided to Wieri for detailed analysis. Guam's aquifer, although considered one of the most robust in the region, is still vulnerable to contamination. During our regular meetings with Wieri and Guam EPA. We have discussed the trend of increasing nitrate levels within many of our drinking water wells. Septic tank systems are documented sources of nitrates in those drinking water wells. Data has been collected and analyzed over the last twenty years. Analysis of this data indicates that the current trends continue. We will see increase by more than one milligram per liter in nitrate concentration in more than thirty wells above. Uh, thirty wells over the next twenty years. More concerning is a projection that more than twenty wells will have the nitrate level which exceeds five milligrams per liter. In the same period. The implication of such exceedance will include additional note, notification, monitoring and mitigation by GWA. Further, if any well exceeds the nitrate maximum contaminant level of ten milligrams per liter. The cost to GWA and its repairs will be the cost of taking the well offline. Constructing another well to make up for the source water, which will become increasingly more difficult to do. Construction of a new well will cost one point five to two million per well. Not including the maintenance of the well as, as well as the actual connection to other, the existing GWA infrastructure. But the bigger cost to all Guam residents is the potential degradation of water quality in our sole source aquifer. Protecting our water, our drinking water resource is a critical priority in the management of our water production and distribution systems. Providing reliable wastewater collection and treatment is an integral part of this protection. It is not lost on GWA that the cost to bring sewer to many properties within the GPC. Can be easily, can be costly to the individual landowner. As described in GWA's twenty eighteen Water Resource Master Plan. GWA will be aggressively extending our water lines throughout critical areas above the GPC. As part of our twenty-year capital improvement program. But this will take time. The master plan calls for GWA to construct five thousand feet per year of sewer line as part of. Set more properties to our wastewater collection system in areas prioritized for water well production. GWA will also plan to launch an improved sewer connection loan program to our customers. And provide technical assistance as, technical assistance as measures which we are, uh, complimentary to the intent of this bill. We have developed a collaborative partnership with both Guam EPA and Wieri. But one of the concerns we share is the enforcement of the Guam water's quality standards. And finding alternatives to septic tanks for lots smaller than a half acre. This partnership helps to ensure that we will be in compliance with Guam EPA's safe drinking water regulations. So that the quality of our water is not compromised. GWA will continue to support Guam EPA and Wieri in evaluating ways. To modernize regulations for individual sewer disposal systems. And incorporate advanced technologies for these systems in order to protect Guam's water resources. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony to Bill four oh four dash thirty-five. Please feel free to contact Miguel Berdallio or anyone at GWA if you have additional questions.
Thank you, thank you, Vanji. Uh, now proceed to Nick Lee, uh, from EBA. Hey, Nick, um, go ahead and unmute and go ahead and testify, please.
Hi, Hafaday Senator. Uh, so Walter Longoro, our administrator is on a call with our, um, our online permitting contractor. So he sends his, uh, regrets for not being able to attend, uh, this morning. Uh, Stabi, uh, reading his testimony, uh, uh, in his place. Hafaday and, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, uh, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. In support of Bill four oh four. The proposed legislation is a progressive step in the right direction. Towards our collective efforts in reducing harmful pollutants from entering our northern aquifer. And compromising the quality of our groundwater. We can all agree that the increased installation and prolonged use of septic tanks in a designated protection zone can. Resolve an irreparable damage to the aquifer, especially if they are improperly maintained and ultimately fail. Nitrate-based contaminants from residential septic tank effluent poses a constant threat to this lens. Which provides the overwhelming majority of drinking water to our population. Guam EPA continues to work closely with GWA and Wieri to develop responsible regulations and compliance strategies. That will advance our efforts to ensure proper management of wastewater while maintaining Guam's water quality standards. The passage of this bill provides a gateway to greatly reducing the impacts commonly associated with type-two individual. Sewerage disposal systems. We also express our confidence in GWA and their master plan to provide critical infrastructure improvements. To areas in the protection zone where development of the traditionally accepted nineteen thousand two hundred square foot subdivided lots will be impacted. As I'll just, uh, fall short of the proposed twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty square foot or half acre requirement. Because of our geography, Guam will always struggle with nitrate-based contaminants from onsite individual sewage disposal systems. Until new and emerging technology like nitrogen-reducing and innovative alternatives or advanced treatment units. Are readily available and formally adopted for use by US CPA. Uh, evaluating their effectiveness as a long-term and safe alternative to centralize sewer connections remains to be seen. To this end, reducing the installation of onsite systems reduces the risk of contamination. And by extension, reduces any degradation to our island's drinking water quality. We look forward to four oh four's passage. There's any, uh, questions about this, it can be, uh, addressed to Walter Longoro. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nick. Um, there's a question on the chat, um. Dr. Dr. John Jensen, and, um, if you could answer that, you have a couple of points you wanted to bring up. Representative Mr. Duinas, but we're not gonna have a question and answer here, just for you to answer that. Uh, uh, just to, um, I guess clarify some items and then we're gonna proceed with. Asking my colleagues if they have any question with the four, uh, that have provided testimony, then we're gonna move to everybody else's testimony. All right, um, Dr. Jensen.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh. Um, commend Mr. Duinas for, for reading our State of the Aquifer report. And, uh, making use of that, uh, information. Uh, one of the points that, uh, we make in that, and, and you've probably heard me say this before. The, um, Northern Wellland's aquifer is a really well-designed aquifer. If, if it were gonna be, uh, designed by an engineer, you couldn't, you couldn't do any better. It's, uh, it's intelligently designed aquifer, I like to say. Uh, and one of the things that we have, uh, that Dr. Havana alluded to is a very, um. Biologically active epicarist zone where that's the part that contains the soil. And the fine materials that, you know, you know, properly constructed, uh, leaching field. Is very active at reducing the, the biological contaminants and even breaking down some of the, uh, chemical contaminants and other nutrients. So, uh, as a consequence, we don't see contaminants from, from sewage. Uh, in our, or we see surprisingly little contamination from sewage. Usually when we get contamination from sewage, it's, it's in the aftermath of a typhoon where. Sewerage lift station has broken down and, and stuff has flooded into a sinkhole and gone straight down shaft and up. Then, and that's another kind of problem, but nitrate is used, uh, by, uh, regulators and. And people who study a contamination in the aquifer is a marker for sewage contamination. Uh, because it's a component of, uh, or of sewage. But the presence of nitrate doesn't necessarily mean that you got the rest of the sewage there with you. Because the nitrogen, the nitrate, and Dr. Habana alluded to the different chemical pathways that, that lead to the production of nitrates and nitrates. But, um, the ni- nitrate is kind of like the CO2 that's left over after combustion. After everything else is gone. Uh, the, the nitrate is, is the remaining material. So that can leach down from the septic tanks, even though the rest of the stuff is, is not, uh, uh, leaching down. And, and so one of the points that I'd like to make and, and I had a conversation with Mr. Damian on this. Where he, he raises, and then he worked with, uh, Dr. Rouse. Um, previously in some of the work we're doing. Um, if septic tanks are installed in an area, they gotta be properly installed and properly maintained. And, um, to, uh, avoid, uh, a lot of trouble. And so some of the trouble is, is not necessarily from septic tanks per se, but from improperly constructed and improperly maintained. So I'd just like to make that, that point. Um, we can mitigate the problem by, by, uh, having good septic tanks where, where we have to live with them. Um, the other point is that, uh, Dr. Havana showed you the trend analysis and I'd just like to emphasize his point. That the trends change and they change for reasons that are not related to the chemistry or the hydrology. But related to land use and, and technology and, and things which we're, we're. Uh, are beyond the scope of, of, of our study. So, and, and like he pointed out, some of these trends that were extrapolated from. Uh, ten years ago or twenty years ago are, are different from the trends that we have now. And that's why it's important that we, we track the time series continually and. And look into, to what's going on now. Uh, uh, another point is that the aquifer, the plumbing in the aquifer is really complicated and you can have. Water that's leaching down from one area that shows up in a, in a very different area because it gets into a fracture conduit. Uh, kind of like a pipe-like system in, in the aquifer. And, and you can have another area that, that, um, is, is under, say, uh, an area that's high risk. That shows no contamination because the water is coming from some other area. Uh, where there's no input of the contaminants. So there isn't necessarily a one-for-one correlation with what's exactly over a given spot or, or given well. And, and it's very difficult to, to, uh, to unravel that. And, um, then the, uh. Well, the last point I was kind of, it just escaped. But the, uh. The importance of, of, uh, of following these, these trends. Uh, can't be, uh, o- o- overemphasized. And, um, I'll, I'll have to come back to them, that's point. It just came back to me. Mr. Duinas mentioned John Mink and the, uh, the Tonga Tonga and the, yes, uh, that, that. Uh, and, and I, uh, I have great, great respect for, for John Mink. He was one of the, uh, pioneers of hydrogeology in, in the Pacific and, and a very, uh, uh, well. Uh, regarded colleague and. And he raised what is an obvious question that we still don't have a real good answer to, and that is how much nitrate is coming from the natural sources. But nitrate isn't necessarily, you know, it isn't like some toxic chemical. It's part of the natural ecosystem. It's a nutrient for plants, and it's not a bad thing except in excessive quantities or if it's a marker for other nasty stuff that's with it. But the the fact that Mr. Duinas brought out that we have a natural background nitrate in the system is something that we should all keep in mind. The fact that you're seeing nitrate in a given area doesn't necessarily mean that it's septic tanks or fertilizers or any other source. And before I get too far out of my field of expertise, I defer to Dr. Habana to comment on that. Like I said, he knows the chemical pathways and the precise processes that control the incidence of nitrate better than I do. But I just wanted to toss those points out in response to Mr. Duinas's excellent points.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jensen. I'll have now Chelsea from Department of Culture. She has a short testimony she would like to provide. Dr. Jensen, okay, thank you. Chelsea. And then after Chelsea, then I'm going to ask my colleagues to ask questions. And I'll just remind everyone that we have fifteen other participants that want to provide testimony, and I want to be able to go through all their testimonies so that all the participants from Weary, UG, DOA, EPA, GWA can listen to it and hear their testimony. All right, Chelsea, if you can, please.
Yes. Good morning, Hafede, Senators Sin Augustin and committee members and all the participants. The Department of Agriculture actually has really short testimony. Unfortunately, we learned of the public hearing late yesterday afternoon, so our division chiefs are still compiling our facts for submission. At this point, we just want to say that we are in favor of the bill and that we will submit written testimony to the committee at a later date.
I hope it'll be sooner than later, but thank you, Chelsea. Questioning first now with the author of the bill, and then I will call out each senator to ask the questions of any of the participants that have testified from Weary, GWA, EPA. Yep, and that'll be it. Then we'll proceed down with the testimonies that are being presented by the folks that have signed up for the link. And then I'll identify them as we move along. Madam Senator Lee, please.
It was Mossy, Mr. Chair. I just want to acknowledge a message in the chat from former Senator Simon Sanchez. He was the first to log in at eight-thirty and he has to leave. So I would be happy to just postpone my questions and allow him to give his testimony. He says it's verbal and short.
All right. Former Senator, Senator Simon, you have a short testimony. I got the clock on you, Uncle Simon. Please do.
Well, yes, Senator, and thank you. This has been an excellent conversation amongst people that were all in it together in terms of protecting this aquifer and the stakeholder collaboration, particularly among the experts. And I'm glad to see representatives of the real estate community and John Duinas, who, you know, has been talking to me about this stuff for a very long time because we're not youngsters anymore. So it's a great conversation. Protecting the aquifer is the most important, it's our most important resource, and we have to do everything we can to protect it. There's many things we have to do, whether it's dealing with Tongan Tongan or dealing with this bill, and Senator Biscley alluded to and a couple of other bills that we've always been trying to see if we could get the legislature and the governor to consider changes in law that would help us protect that aquifer. This bill doesn't prevent development over the aquifer. It does remove what, you know, I agree with Senator Biscley, it's characterized, and not in a bad way. I understand why it was there before. The way we treat family subdivisions is important to us because of our cultural history. But the risk now is when we have higher-density development over a special area like the northern aquifer, it creates a trade-off, and policymaking is all about trade-offs. And, you know, without water, we don't have Guam. And so that's the ultimate thing we have to protect in order for all the other things to work together. It will make development of property a little more challenging, a little more expensive, but that is one of the trade-offs. Vanji pointed out that GWA has a very aggressive program. You know, we've spent six hundred fifty million making sure your water is safe to drink, and we can process your wastewater properly. John pointed out the other pieces of the puzzle is that when we take wastewater from your building, how do we make sure it gets to that new plant and not threaten the aquifer? And the other piece of the puzzle is GWA is also aggressively spending money on fixing our leaking water lines, and many of the biggest leaks are up north. Because the less we draw from the aquifer, the better. We really are drawing more water from the aquifer than we need to to meet the needs of a growing Guam. And when we fix those leaks, that also helps that aquifer recharge and stay healthy. So GWA is asking for ratepayers to sacrifice. We're going to spend almost $2 billion over a thirty-five-year period. And the next phase of spending is on fixing leaking water lines and fixing leaking sewer lines. And that's our role, and that's the sacrifice we as ratepayers are going to have to make to protect this aquifer so we can have Guam forever, right? So I support the bill. I'm glad that we're going to, I think it needs to be passed. It needs to be passed. It closes a loophole that had unintended consequences. But and at the end of the day, the clean water is priceless. And we don't want to be in a situation, we see our neighbors in Saipan and what they struggle with. And, yeah, maybe it's, it will create a little bit of a higher tax on ourselves as we develop property, but that tax is to protect the aquifer for everyone so that Guam can continue to grow in the future. So I'm here to express my support. I think the details that GWA provided in their testimony are excellent. And this represents only my personal opinion, Mr. Chair. As a member of the CCU, it doesn't represent the opinions of the whole commission. We did not take a position, but I suspect we have no problems and completely support Miguel Bernalio's detailed testimony. So I asked the body to consider passing this bill for the greater good of our community. I think it's one more piece of the puzzle to make sure we always have clean, safe drinking water, and we protect that most precious resource, that aquifer, for generations to come. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Simon. Senator Lee, do you have any further questions for any of the proponents that have brought up issues so we can move on to our other colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much. This question is for either Dr. Jensen or Dr. Habana from Weary. How do we know that the cause of nitrates in our supply come from septic tanks? Maybe Dr. Habana, if you're available to answer.
Well, when we're talking, when we're showing like more than eighty wells that are showing increasing, and then we go back in time when the well was there, you know, there was a time when it was, it had low nitrate concentrations. So we can go back and look at our chart and say there was a time when it was one part per million. You know, some of the wells that are showing the lowest ones, they go below one part per million. So there is that, and then, and then as we go over time from nineteen eighty-six and how we've developed and changed, things broke and things don't work so well anymore. And when we're talking about contaminant transport, and it takes time for it to build up as even though it keeps trickling in there. It started from nothing, and then it goes, and then we expect a plateau. And then it will plateau at a level until more is introduced to it. Then it will continue to climb again. That's what we're, so it came from, there was a time when there was this ambient low-development time, maybe in the seventies or the sixties before we developed the whole, you know, and septic tanks spread out. There was time Kaiser had laid down the sewer lines and everything, and it was nice and a clean aquifer. So.
Thank you, Dr. Habana. And if you can explain why it's less harmful to our aquifer to have or to allow septic tanks for properties that are larger than half an acre? Why is there that distinction?
Oh, I'm not so sure I understand.
So if it's a larger area, it's less harmful to the aquifer to allow septic tanks on those properties if it's like, let's say, half an acre or a larger piece of property?
Okay, I think I understand that if there's more houses crunched together.
Right, the density.
The density, right? So the, yeah, yeah. I've done some groundwater models and tested in the past that if you have them scattered around and then you put a well nearby, the concentration is much less that reaches the well. But when you shove a bunch of houses together or a source of nitrates, it's a strong signal. So that's where I'm going, coming from. It's something that I've tested using groundwater models of solid transport and was able to observe that kind of response.
Thank you. And just to be clear, Dr. Habana, your new time interval analysis still shows that if the current trend continues unchanged, wells will eventually exceed the acceptable levels of nitrate contamination. Is that correct?
I want to say with a big if, right? If it continues, but I've also introduced the idea that some that are listed in the increasing using the linear trend method will show increasing, but if we look at it as our data spread and look at it non-linearly, we can see a rising and flattening in sixteen wells.
Okay.
But still, that's only twenty percent. Thank you.
Right. No, that's helpful. And, Mr. Chair, I just have a few questions for Vanji.
All right.
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Vanji. Thank you so much. Can you detail some of the mitigation or treatment work that GWA may have to pay for if nitrate contamination levels reach limits above our local or federal standards?
So the federal maximum contaminant level is ten. However, once it reaches five, that's our local level that from which we now have to do additional data collection, monitoring, sampling. So and we would have to do a system analysis for each of those wells where we see an exceedance of five milligrams per liter. So every month, GWA goes out and takes samples for a variety of parameters within our drinking water system, both the wells and the individual lines. And we use sampling taps around the island. So we will have to increase that number. Right now, it's, we test the entire system monthly. So we would probably have to increase it depending on how close we get to it to see what the trends are, where the sources are. And if it's getting too high, maybe we'll have to shut it down at that time to see how that, how the well is responding to shutting down a well or not and seeing what this entire system looks like. So all of this, every time we go out and take a sample from anything, a well or a line or anything, we have to then do the analysis. We send all of our data to Weary so that they can keep track of it. But internally, we also do our own analysis, and that is just an additional cost that we will then have to incur to monitor the well more closely. So now instead of monthly, maybe we're doing it weekly. Maybe we're doing it more periodic depending on how, during the season and how, what the numbers look like. And then how, what other mitigation measures we can do. Sometimes it's that we're going to have to shut down a well and redirect the water. And so, of course, that creates a different problem for the landowners, pressure changes, things like that. So there's a lot involved in it, but basically it's a system assessment that will have to be done for every time that we get to five MGL. But we have meetings quarterly with a bunch of technical stakeholders, including Weary and Guam EPA. And we're really looking at this data. We're very fortunate that Weary collects these data, is the repository for this data. So we're very lucky. In many jurisdictions, don't necessarily have that history of information. And so we can really make good trend analysis, which is why our partnership with Weary is so critical as well as with Guam EPA. So Guam EPA, well, we work collaboratively together so that we can see, okay, well, here's this issue. Why is the data looking this way? Why are we doing this? Or what do you think the causes are? This is a really good example of really trying to use scientific data to make appropriate policy and management. And that is something that I know that a lot of times the government of Guam gets criticized for not doing some, not planning, not using the information that we have, that we're always reactive versus proactive. This is an example of that. Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's just much more costly when we're reacting as opposed to planning ahead.
Exactly. And so the MCL, the five milligrams per liter is really that point where as a community, we decided that that is a warning point for us. We never really want to get to that point, and so once you get there, the cost is exponential.
Right. Thank you so much, Vanji. Just one other question for you. Senator Simon mentioned six hundred and fifty million dollars over the last few years for safe drinking water. And I just thought that was astronomical amount of money. I think that's like two-thirds the amount of our entire GovGuam budget, six hundred and fifty million. So, you know, we know that our utilities are really critical. And one concern from other stakeholders about this measure is the lack of available utilities in these areas above the aquifer. And, you know, we share that concern. So can you just share some of GWA's strategic plans to build and install more lines into these neighborhoods? Would paying fines or maybe further nitrate treatment systems kind of take away from projects like this to expand the sewer access to the sewer for more folks?
I think that we had completed our master plan in 2018 and looked at the variety of options that would best benefit the aquifer as well as the ratepayer, as well as GWA. And I think that we recognize that connecting to the sewers is one of the measures to ensure that, one, the service is available to people and that we're doing it in a healthy way, healthy for their family, but also healthy for the aquifer. And so right now, we're going through a cost study for what that would cost for all these additional lines. But we are committed to putting five thousand feet of sewer lines across the island in areas closest to our, over the areas that are very critical for that water production area. And that way, we have it available to people. I know that our general manager is very interested in working with large developers as well as more land trusts, ancestral lands, in helping them identify their areas that they plan for future development. One of the things that he is also committed to is providing that information on where GWA plans to put these lines and share that with the public so that developers as well as individual landowners know our future plans. So we're planning to put this up quickly within the next few years of starting to construct more additional sewer lines across the areas above the groundwater protection zone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vanji, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm looking at the screen here. Senator, who we got here? We got, where am the Senator Kelly here? I know she's, Senator, I guess Senator Kelly's off. Okay, let's go to Senator Teresa Ryan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Vanji, I'll just follow up on that question. So when do you expect to have the expanded sewer system in the zone, the groundwater protection zone? When does your plan say that that would be finished?
I know that our engineers are working on the plan right now. I I know that um our engineers are working on the plan right now, and I know that it's Miguel's hope that we can get something rather within the, I I believe the P U C gave us a deadline, and I don't wanna uh necessarily tell you that, I, cause I don't remember, but uh certainly I I can have Miguel respond to that, but um relatively soon, I I think we wanna be very um caution uh careful about what the cost will be to the rate pair as we ex- do this, these expanded lines. We're very committed to this, and so as you know, that that's how we get our revenue. We do not wanna put a big burden on the rate pairs. But in our existing rate pair case, there is this, the cost has been included in that um as we're increasing our rates now, that we're committed to putting sewer lines across the G P C. So I think that the plan is is due this year within the next uh before the end of the the calendar year, the plan.
Do you do you have any idea how long the plan anticipates this to be completed?
Um, I know that the hope is that we can do five thousand uh feet per year, so I'm not quite sure, like especially as development occurs, we would want to extend our system across the uh across the, especially across the areas around the
Okay, but for the groundwater protection zone, that's the area where where development would be stifled pending water line or sewer lines being put in by G W A. Where where exactly is the groundwater protection zone? Can you tell it to us in um, for example, what parts of the villages and
Doctor Nate can show the map. It's basically the northern part of Guam. I mean, from central to the north, excluding
Okay, so you're talking about the whole northern part of the island?
Uh, central and northern, cause we have wells in Agania as well. So it's not just Dedido Gigo, it's gonna be Dedido Gigo to to winning Manila. So basically, the wells are in all of these areas, but development is not stifled. We have existing regulation of what the requirement is for sewer and septic. It's um there's already existing regulation. This doesn't change any of that regulation.
Well, it's prohibiting um.
Septic uh.
Septic tanks, right.
Smaller than a half acre. So that's the existing regulation right now.
You're saying this is already required by law, so we don't need this bill?
I think it's already required in the regulation. I think that the reason this came up was um there's an exception that allows the administrator of Guam E P A to to waive this. So people smaller than a half acre can do this. The but the the law's already existing.
Okay, so maybe I can ask E P A then. E- E P A, if you're the one that's been waiving these requirements, why are you doing that? And uh you're now fa- uh testifying in favor of this bill where you take away your own authority? Well, if it's within your discretion, why have you been allowing it?
I thank you for the question, Senator. Uh I have somewhat a cursory knowledge on on this. I I know that there was a a the public law twenty four fifty one did authorize the the administrator of E P A uh to to grant certain uh exceptions in areas that did not have uh 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 the ability to uh connect to the public sewer and and a lot of the area that's being described in that uh protection zone fits that. So I I'm not sure what the, you know, what the original intent of uh uh of that was at the time, uh except perhaps to to have uh to not uh impede uh development, uh you know, for for housing from for people that have had lots passed down to them through their families. Uh so it was it was specific to areas that uh that did not have readily available sewer connections. Uh but I can get more information from uh from the folks at our water uh division and then submit those uh to the committee.
Right. Well, yeah, we know this is affecting parental subdivisions. That's specific in the bill. They want to stop this exception for parental subdivisions, which E P A, I guess, is the one that's been allowing the exceptions, and I wanna know what is the logic behind allowing the exceptions and then coming in and saying, now, don't allow any exceptions. We don't even want the discretion. Uh I guess, i- it's been in your control this whole time. Can I clarify what you said earlier? Did you say nineteen thousand lots are affected? What do you mean by that?
Uh no, I was talking about uh uh the lot size. So uh in the exemption, there was this uh, there was a, there was a table uh that's been uh uh used to determine the lot size uh uh of a parental subdivision, and and that's tr- been traditionally nineteen thousand two hundred square feet. Uh but uh we just wanted to point out that the that the language in the in the bill is calling for a half acre, uh which is slightly more than nineteen thousand uh two hundred, which 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 I I think is what the uh what the lot size was to to receive this exemption. But I do, I would also point out that uh if the proximity uh to that development um is too close to a production well, uh I I don't think that many uh previous administrators, including our own, uh would have would have uh exercised that authority to allow a septic tank to be a to be built on that development.
Did that answer your question, Senator Teresa? So we can move along?
Yes, so, yeah, can I ask one more question, Mr. Chair? Just so you said you're uh implementing a sewer protection loan program. When will that be available?
It's available now. It's been available over the last probably five or six years. U S C P A originally gave the uh funding to us. We've been uh notifying customers. There are some um criteria to meet this loan package. It's a very low cost loan. You you we want, you have to get like three uh um bank denial. It's similar to like you have to show need. But we have it av- available within our office. There's documents and flyers, and it's available on our website, I believe. That you can get this sewer connections done. Um the thing that we have a challenge is that people don't necessarily uh apply for them. But also, um, we would like to improve that loan package to a allow for more, a lot more people to be able to take advantage of it. But it is available, about three or four people have already taken advantage of this and utilize it. Use use the funds to connect to the sewer.
All right, um. Yeah, Miss Mister Doctor Havana, when you talked about the the nitrates and the different sources of nitrates that that are possible um possibly lead into the contamination, the um uh, yes, is have you have, has there been a study on, for example, septic tanks that are not in compliance with the regulations for septic tanks? I mean, are the are all septic tanks contributing to this or just those that are that are have not been that are too old or have not been um built in compliance with the rules?
Well, the the you know, um, I I've talked with the former uh Guam E P A Benny Cruz back then, and he was, I I remember him. There are some cases where they found uh the the maintenance free septic tank practice uh at a time where I was informed where after it's been inspected, the septic tank is past inspection, they pull down the back hole and bust a hole in the bottom of the septic tank, and now you've got a now, I don't know exact, I've never witnessed any of this, but I've heard that it's been seen. And then there's some cases where it's just a septic pit or or it's just a hole in the ground. Uh these I've only heard and I've not seen yet, but they say they exist. And I don't go around houses to find out for sure. So it's only what I've heard.
All right. Well, I just wanted to know, because I wanted to know, we are enforcing our current e- existing regulations to cr- to ensure septic tanks are are in compliance. Yeah, I just wanted to be fair. You know, we, yeah, I live in an area where I'm on a sewer, but right across the street from me, they're not. And so I'm paying additional, you know, forty dollars a month for that and uh and uh but I'm in the south, right? But uh it's a, it's a significant increase in the bill for these consumers and uh that that is, of course, my concern here. And I just want, yeah, i- if we are uh building septic tanks, they should, E P A should be monitoring those or somebody and G W A, E P A, and they should be in compliance. I I'm, I hate to think we're gonna you know, cut out. Um, I mean, the goal is to get onto the sewer lines, but while they're not available, that we're going to, you know, prohibit any building up any more residences until G W A gets these sewer lines in.
Think that we're not prohibiting it. I think what we're asking is that we comply with what's existing in the regulation.
All right, uh let's wrap this up. Senator Teresa, we still have other colleagues that would ask questions, many test, fifteen other individuals testified. Do you have anything else, Senator Teresa?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um Senator Jim Winnan, do you have any questions, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um just going through my takeaways from what I'm understanding, I appreciate uh the doctor's testimonies, that that's very helpful. Uh what I what I'm hearing also is that, you know, the passage of four oh four with the for the nitrates, it it's a maybe. It maybe will reduce the effects of the nitrates because other factors are also there. But but of course, it's, you know, it could or could not be. Um, I think Doctor Jensen uh gave me some good insight as well, where he's talking about the best mitigation he can see is with the proper septic tanks and the maintenance of it, uh like my colleague was just uh uh speaking about as well. So that was a good takeaway for me as also. And then, in addition, I uh I'm glad G W A is aggressively doing their target of five thousand feet uh near the uh the water tanks, the water wells too, but that's that's where as a start and E P A and agriculture and G W A and e- everybody wants to protect the aqua filters. That that's understood. But what, how is this gonna affect our our home, our home buyers, you know, our families that are wanting to start out? And in reality, we're just, from my, what I understand now, that we're just eliminating the exception uh that the director would have uh by allowing some homes to be built uh versus versus not, taking away that exception of of possibility. Uh and I I think that exception was probably a, in there as long as it's not abused, that that's a good, good cause uh to have when some of these homes are really in in the sticks. And if they have the proper septic tank in the meantime, and then eventually when that sewer line stretches out that far, uh they can apply for that, the loan that G W A was talking about too. Uh but I I just wouldn't wanna see, uh and, you know, a half acre lot is is anything smaller than a half acre lot, you know, that's a pretty nice size of property. A lot of people can not be, not even afford a half acre lot, but only a single lot. It's a thousand square feet. But if we're gonna require them to hook up to the sewer and they're way out there and the line's not gonna be uh connected in uh for quite some time, and then we're looking at, it, this is only a possibility that it could protect our our aqua uh um our water wells. Uh then maybe that exemption is necessary, but I'm interested to hear more of the topics that uh are being discussed. So I appreciate the opportunity, and this is really good information in discussing the bill for four. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Senator Jim. Senator Kelly, do you have a question, ma'am?
To do a small see, Mr. Chair. Yes, um I have a a couple of questions, one of which was partially answered. So i- it has been really important to hear the testimony here, um to hear what the scientific analysis is, to hear that uh what the possibilities are. And of course, the importance of, you know, erring on the on the side of caution. Um, but I I do have uh some questions because we we do need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to safeguard something that's irreplaceable and uh in invaluable in so many ways. Uh our greatest resources, one of the speakers said. Uh this is for Doctor uh Jensen, i- if he's still here. Sorry, I had some technical difficulties, so I came and went. I'm not sure. Oh, yes, he is still here. Yes, so for Doctor Jensen, um, are there any, uh I'm not saying that this would solve everything, but are there some natural solutions? Are there particular types of plantings that we could encourage or, I mean, maybe even require for those subdivisions that that do have the septic tanks? Is there something that we could be doing organically as well as considering legislation like this? Oh, I think you're on mute.
Yeah. My switch seems to be pretty slow. That that's, that's an interesting question. Um, the structure of our aquifer is is such that um we have such a thick Vado zone that the plants don't get their roots down into the uh waterlands, which is a good thing for us because they don't uh they don't suck it dry like they do on on low islands. Uh so, the, there isn't, uh once the water gets past the root zone, there isn't really any interaction between the vegetation and the uh water supply. Um, so I I I can't think of anything offhand that that would can uh that that could be done in terms of landscaping or vegetation that would affect this. So I'll ask Doctor Havana to follow up when I'm done. Uh again, the 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 best thing to do, and this is outside of science, this is the the purview of the regulators and and policymakers is is to make sure that the best, where septic tanks are used, that the best uh technology is used and that they're built to specification and code and and maintained. Uh again, that doesn't necessarily um eliminate the production of nitrate from septic tanks because that's the end member of the biological and chemical reactions that are that are taking place. So um there's, there there, there's always some some input. So it's, it's a um, I guess my final thought on that would be that, you know, I I think major should be taken for innovative uh solutions such as the um technology that Doctor Rouse was looking into that essentially creates a a miniature waste treatment facility. Uh household sized waste treatment uh plant uh for for replacing septic tanks with, and but tha- that again is uh is is kind of leading edge, but but it's the kind of stuff we should certainly promote over the long term. And maybe, you know, ag- again, I'm outside my lane to suggest how to implement the right kind of policy, but maybe things like tax incentives and tax credits for for innovative uh technical solutions or or subsidies or discounts or rebates in in uh construction costs to to install some of those new technologies. I'll I'll defer to Doctor Havana to head to that.
It's just a small see for the answer. And yes, I'm I'm interested in hearing from Doctor Havana as well. You know, I know that we've done various types of experimentation, and we've come up with uh the understanding that uh the vertiver grass. It has roots that grow nine feet long and it helps with erosion. So um I I don't know if there's something that's known, but maybe it's something that can continue to be researched as well because I think every possibility at solving this is um is is going to benefit us all. But Doctor Havana, do you know of any vegetation that can help for areas that might have leaks or just is a a smart thing to do if you already have a septic tank? As some roots that might absorb this kind of uh possible leak or waste?
Well, well, I'm no expert with with um agriculture and things like that and how plants work and and with with nitrates. I don't go that far. That that's more of maybe Doctor Galabi is more familiar with and Agriculture Department would be more familiar with things like that and they they study composting and those kinds of things. But um I'm just looking at the nitrate trends in our aquifer uh that we see in the wells and and possibilities of its sources.
Okay, and um if I could just uh follow up with, I I was really pleased to hear that we do have a local program that allows for loans. We've looked at other possibilities about whether payments can be stretched out over time, but the loan perhaps is similar to that. Uh does anybody aware, maybe um from E P A or uh Van G Luhan? Is anybody aware of any federal programs that we could be seeking that helps us address these things, that provides a a type of outreach and assistance and relief? that helps us address these things that provides a type of outreach and assistance and relief to our developers? Maybe Van G, if you could say?
So the existing loan program, the seed money for that did come from USCPA. I know that we're looking to see if we could put some additional funds from our rates that we collect. I do know that in we have tried to work with certain low cost housing development areas for USDA. I know USDA does have some utility infrastructure programs that they are able to individual landowners can or groups of of landowners can get together and utilize some of those sources. So USDA does have some of those programs that can help bring in the utility to a community.
Excellent. So what would it take to to make that happen? To have that applied here?
Best to talk to USDA and the small business. We did in the American Water Works Association conference a couple of years ago that we had locally, we did have a representative that tried to explain to for people to try to get take avail of some of these loan programs that they do have.
Okay, those two avenues that I got to explore were very helpful. I think that there is the ability to pursue both of them in the pursuit of trying to tackle this issue. So I'll save the rest of my comments and questions, Mr. Chair. So just Mossy.
Thank you, Senator Tello. Do you have any questions, ma'am, Senator Tello? And we're going to move along to Senator Sabina, then we're going to move to we have fifteen other folks that would like to testify. So I'm not going to ask it, allow anybody to ask questions other than after the senators is the normal process. Senator Tello, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. And thank you, everyone, for being here. It's obvious that this is a very contentious bill. I'm finally catching up with, I'm finally catching up with the testimony that was submitted. And I truly believe, Mr. Chair, this is a possibility, or I suggest roundtable to be scheduled on this so that we can bring more people in to participate, especially the directors of these agencies who are not here today, it'd be important to have them. I think this legislation, if we're going to put out legislation such as this, then we we can't leave our people in the dark afterwards. You know, having them, if this bill should pass and then where they go from there, I think that we need to find some kind of solution. So Roundtable may bring that, but absolutely agree with protecting our aquifer, totally absolutely agree with this. And it's kind of concerning because it said the aquifer not only in the northern, but the central, I think Van G mentioned that it's not just north, but central, if I'm not mistaken. So now you're the demographics have now expanded. Everyone's thinking it's just the north, but central? Okay, we we need to look at that map thoroughly. I wish it was on on all the time so we can look at that. But most of my questions, go ahead, Van G, please, go ahead.
Maybe Nate, if he could show the location, I don't know, that way everybody has a say.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah. It's okay. I'll I'll get that map as well as the report that was provided by Weary on the status of the aquifer. I think that's for 2020. I think that's very important to read, finding out the the issues that they've come up from Tongan Tongan. I mean, that's that's quite interesting. So my question is EPA to EPA, does EPA monitor any leaks from their sewer system in the military?
Hi, Senator, thank you for the question. So these things are supposed to be reported. I'm sorry, can you hear me well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah. So there's a there's reporting requirements that that everybody on Guam is going to be subject to. And I believe that DoD facilities are subject to that as well. But I like confer with with people at the our water division just to make sure, and I could send you a message on that. I could send the chair our response as well.
Okay, just as long as EPA is able to monitor DoD's sewage system, because it's also mentioned in the in the report that a lot of this is coming from leaks, you know, from pipes, and that's a concern. It's not just us. But other than that, I'll make it short, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate and looking forward to listening to everyone else's testimony. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Senator Sabina, do you have any questions you want to post to the folks that have testified earlier? So we can move on to the other testimony. We have fifteen folks to testify. You need to unmute, Senator Sabina. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity. And yes, I agree that, you know, I think that these are one of the challenges that we face when we live above our water resource. And, you know, what we do above it can eventually impact it. And, you know, I understand that, you know, with the MCL, the levels, the level to, you know, instigate action, but, you know, it has to be, you know, the definitely, it's a public health issue that could could happen because of this. But I'm just thinking too, regards to maybe this question is for Dr. Jensen regarding, you know, I know there were nitrate studies that were done. Can you explain, like, can we tell the difference between nitrate level coming from sewage versus, let's say, agriculture or yeah, agriculture? Is that, is there a difference between that?
That's a good question. And I'll, again, I'll pass the mic to Dr. Havana here when I'm done. But that's cutting edge kind of research on nitrogen. There are techniques for determining nitrogen by looking at the concentration of stable isotope, nitrogen fifteen that is kind of left over from the physiological processes of going through animal metabolisms. And and there are experimental exploratory techniques for discerning nitrate that comes from sewage versus nitrate that comes from other sources. But we're not doing that. And and it's expensive and a major undertaking to do that. So in principle, the answer to your question is yes. In terms of practical application, what we're doing at Weary and what anybody could do with resources that we have, there's, there's no way to tell from the data that we have right now and the work that we're doing. We'd be going off in the National Science Foundation sponsored research that would take several years. And, you know, we'd be happy to do that if we could gear up for it. But that's, that's long term, cutting edge science. Dr. Havana, do you want to add to that? I'll have to excuse myself real soon because I've got a class to teach. And by the way, the topic today is the proper role of scientists in contributing to public policy decisions. So I've got a logical starting point here to share with you.
Yeah, just
Okay. Oh, no. Okay, never mind.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, thank you. But I think the the nitrate level, whatever it is, is has the same impact health wise. Is that correct? If there's rising nitrate levels in the water, would that still have the same impact on our health?
Well, I'm sorry. I thought.
Senator Sabina, who are you asking that question of?
I guess Weary, maybe Weary or Guam PA.
Yeah, like I say, I'll defer to my nitrate expert on that. You know, all I can say is nitrate is nitrate. I'll let Dr. Havana feel there.
Yeah, I've never seen anybody go further than nitrate is nitrate, especially in our lab. We look at, is it present and at what concentration NO three, right? And that's what it is, or whether we're not looking at anything isotopes or what what comes from where, whether it's from from the plants or from from agriculture activity, you know, yeah, that's our level of of study with that.
Another question for this is for Dr. Havana. So in regards to concentration of any kind of contaminant such as this nitrate, do you, in your studies of the aquifer, you know, is there a clearing that happens? I noticed in one of your the levels that you were showing, there was an increase and then it flattened out. Or is that an equilibrium that's occurring as far as clearing and adding of of that particular contaminant?
I used to do some simulation. Okay, I used to do some simulations of even some random case, random cases on how nitrate would trickle down through our Vado zone and get to our waters. When when you initiate the the bulk amount of discharge of nitrates and it gets down to our water level, the first piece of the concentration starts to, we start at zero when there was no nitrates and then eventually it slowly goes up within about four to five months, or it could even go through years depending on what's diluting it and the whole complicated process that goes into it. But eventually, like you said, I believe it will flatten as long as nothing else is introduced of of the same rate. If you have a rate that's going in at some, you know, over time, the bulk rate to it and the bulk motion of things that can dilute and affect it. And there'll be a point where where it'll flatten out. And for it to rise some more, you'll have to introduce more.
Yeah, basically, the aquifer is very dynamic and the the rise is a is a result of basically greater, an increased rate of addition versus a versus the rate of release, a discharge.
If we could, if it gets down there, yes.
Okay. And there's many factors that can affect that, of course, as far as the rainy season, you know, dry season, do you see that difference as well?
There was one time we were, we were in our in our imagination or the way we try to understand things, we think that you know, okay, it's gonna rain, it's gonna dilute it. Well, Dr. Rouse, when we used to, when we ran to one of the wells that we were studying, we had, we just bought a probe analysis and it never changed when during the dry season. And then on a stormy day, it spiked that we had to test it five times just in case we're not seeing things, you know. Or we didn't, we double checked our methods, you know, wait, wait, let's recalibrate that. I don't believe it, you know. Where we wiped our hands and got all clean and made sure we tried it five times. And sure enough, during a time when you think dilution was gonna occur, it didn't, right? And then it turns out we were near a sewered area. And you think, you might think, well, it's sewed, why is it elevated? And then again, to add to the complication, it turns out this well is next to the house where we don't know if it's connected to a sewer or not. And it's right near, right near the well. I mean, it's about twenty feet, you know, or less than twenty feet I could walk and I bet you, you know.
And then regards to the ground groundwater protection zone, I understand that that is, it's in need of updating. When is, when would that, I think in the last discussions that we had, you were supposed to find or at least hire somebody to do that. And I think there was some perhaps a prioritization over like the peril basal zones and, you know, the ground, the water wells as well. You know, what is the the timeline for that as far as the ground groundwater protection zone, as far as updating that?
Dr. Jensen is the one.
Yeah, I'll comment on that before I sign off. But that's a timely question. We're working now with Guam PA and GWA and our own internal funding sources and federal funds that we get to put together a project to address the question of how to develop appropriate priorities for aquifer protection. It's a big topic and it'll take a couple of years actually to to get a result because it requires economic analysis as well as hydrology. But the point that I'd like to make in answer to somebody else's question is that the current aquifer protection zone was actually drawn by John Mink back in the seventies when obviously the question was put to him, well, what parts of the aquifer should we protect and what which parts can't or or be protected or require less priority? And he drew a line four thousand feet inside the coast and said, within this four thousand feet, the lens is is too thin and too unpredictable to be able to develop. But inside that, the central core of the northern plateau, within the four thousand feet and farther from the coast, that's where the water is. And that's the developable portion. So just protect all of it. So so the aquifer protection zone is a map with four thousand feet inside the coast and everything inside it is protected. So and in fairness to John Mink, you know, back in those days, what else could you do? We we're now at the point where we need a more sophisticated approach. But it's going to take a multidisciplinary approach and and digging into the literature and seeing how other communities and other islands do it and taking a systematic look at it. So we're, we're on it, but it's going to take us a while.
So, you know, within the groundwater protection zone, I, you know, there are definitely some very critical areas though, right? And as far as like the the peril basal areas and the Gigo two months off, those are pretty critical areas, I think, because that's where most of the water comes from and the best water.
Yeah. Yes, it's a matter of looking at where the best water is that needs the most protection and then where and juxtaposing that against where the worst threats are and try and find some balance. It's a, it's a classic and very challenging, but very important problem. I better excuse myself. My students are going to be signing on here any second now to
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jensen, for all your work.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to participate in the discussion and contribute. It's our pleasure.
Just another question for Dr. Havana. Maybe I should have asked this of Dr. Jensen, but, you know, this, how about composting toilets? Is that, I mean, you know, that's something that would that have an impact, a bigger impact than, you know, septic tanks or less of an impact?
Well, I don't know much about composting and the whole exercise of doing that. It's not something I've ever done or, you know, have any experience or looked in. I've seen some people say great things about it and using it for planting. And that's as far as I've gone with it. And I'm not, Dr. Rouse was going into that kind of study, looking at methods of treating wastewater and even the sludge or, you know, the solid waste from it. But not me, I didn't go into that.
And this is a question for Guam PA. So I remember Administrator Leon Walter, he was looking at, you know, technologies that would improve septic tank performance. So is this, I guess, with, you know, perhaps as an intermediate approach to in addition to, of course, enforcement, I think ultimately we need to enforce the the septic tank laws, but, you know, is, what's, what's the, I guess, the stance now in regards to that? Obviously, if, yeah, has the stance changed on that?
Hi, Senator, thank you for the question. So we do understand that USCPA nationally is looking at alternatives to centralize sewer systems. They are looking into alternatives for for onsite wastewater management systems on on residential areas. Earlier this year, they touted this nitrogen sensor challenge to, you know, look into the effectiveness of these systems. But I I think at this point, there's just not enough data. But I will say that the the technology looks promising. But for right now, if we want to take an aggressive Uh, i- if we want to take an aggressive stance to remove any compromise to our, uh, to our, our water system. We uh, thi- this, this would, this would certainly address that until uh, un- until we know for sure that. A new and emerging technology like uh, like nitrogen reducing innovative innovation is, is gonna be effective for Guam. Uh, and not, not just in terms of a, a system and design, but even a, a cost effective. Cost effectiveness of installation and, and maintenance. Uh, it, it looks promising, but it, it still remains to be seen.
Okay, thank you. So uh, I guess a question um maybe for, this could be for any, any, anybody on the panel, so. You know, if the public sewer is not available, um, you know, the concern is like if they can't afford the sewage hookups. And uh, this is banned, you know, what, what would they turn to and would that be um more problematic perhaps? I mean, that's something to, to think about. Is that gonna be a, a positive problem? Maybe um.
You know, if anybody specifically, Senator Sabina, you wanted to ask that question because all the folks that you have here are not folks that are dealing with that. Maybe when we get to the testimony of everybody else, then we can clarify a lot of the stuff that are.
For Nick or Vanji?
Vanji, do you have an answer to that? Uh, I don't.
I think right now the regulation states that if you are, uh, if sewer is not available to you. Then you could put in a septic system on a half acre property. Uh, that's what the regulation states, and I think this law is just reaffirming that. So that it's not that case. I think that the parental subdivision is less than a. Uh, half acre. So. I'm, I, I mean, I know what I did when it was my situation, but uh, I will keep my, I will provide that testimony when it's. Me, Vanji Yuan. I think the big thing here, uh, on GWA, what GWA really wants to be able to do is really be able to provide that. The plan as to where this is all gonna be. Know what? So this law doesn't change everything that has happened up to now, right? So if you've already had it permitted, if you went in and you got a, a waiver already from Guam EPA to do this, this is, doesn't change you. So this is about planning ahead. And so I think that as soon as we have an idea of where our lines are gonna be. That is, that, that's what we're gonna do. Tell the community where those are. So, and the schedule, so you know. In five year, in three years from now, this is the locations that we plan to expand our system to. Here's what it's gonna be in ten years, here's what it's gonna be in five years. So I think that this is, we're gonna give you information to the community as to where our expansion of the systems are gonna be.
Thank you. And uh, Nick, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, I, I, I agree with everything that, uh, that, that, uh, that you echoed in that point.
All right, um, yeah, thank you. I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sabina. Now we're gonna go down the list, and I know that uh, most of you are probably wondering, we're gonna, we're gonna end at eleven o'clock. No, we're not. We're gonna end when everybody has submitted all their testimony and their, their written or verbal testimony. And I will begin with Ms. Ellen Wilkinson. Are you still there, Ms. Ellen? There will be no further questions to the panel. Um, there'll be all testimonies now. Ms. Ellen Wilkinson, are you there? If not, um. I, I know she was there. I don't blame her if she had to step out and then she'll come back. But we're gonna move down. We have um. Ryan De Guzman, homeowner, are you still there, Ryan? I'm, I'm looking, Ryan, you're there. Please, if you have a testimony you wanna present, please. Mr. Ryan De Guzman, if you unmute, please.
How for Dave, Mr. Chairperson, and uh, how for Dave to everybody on the panel? Um, I think this is a really, really um serious issue. Um. It appears to me at face value that um, I couldn't support this bill uh as it's written. Um, I believe that uh, we need more information and more data. Uh, this is gonna affect um many homeowners. Um, I'm a resident of Dedito. And I'm also a homeowner in Gigo. And uh, I also uh work as a real estate broker. Uh, for an office and that uh helps people uh with uh homeownership. So as an advocate for homeownership and private prop- property rights, um, I do respect um that we wanna protect. The aquifer and uh I would like to see um us have more time. To bring all the stakeholders to the table, to discuss um different alternative methods on how we can solve this issue. Um, and uh, I hope that we can uh give it the time that it deserves. Uh, as I uh stand here before you today, uh, I would have to respectfully say no. To Bill four oh four dash thirty-five uh as it's written, and I would like to see more of it. Maybe we can table this and bring uh more stakeholders to the table. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Ryan, uh, De Guzman. Uh, we have Dave Demian. Dave, um, David, um, unmute, please, and please, um, you have a testimony?
There we go. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity uh given to me last night, uh Chairman, off a day. Good morning. And um, good morning, Senator Regina Bisco Lee and the Senators of the Thirty-Fifth Guam Legislature. And of course, the Guam community following this uh public hearing this morning. My name, as you mentioned, is Dave Demian. I am the owner of CGSS Clean Green Sustainable Solutions. Which is a test project business that has been studying and testing various sustainable technologies. Determined to be potentially beneficial for our island home of Guam. I live in northern Gigo and I've lived on Guam all my life. Guam is my home. The well-being of our island of Guam is of utmost importance to me and we have done this test project with high hopes of providing something good. In conjunction with this, I also focus on, a lot on uh real estate business as a Realtor Associate Broker and provide real estate development consultation as well. Um, and so I am very aware the challenges residents have. So related to our CGS company, CGSS company, I've been, we have been in system testing for approximately nine years. The primary system we have been alpha testing on our unique tropical island, as we know, are called Fuji Clean Onsite Sewer Treatment Systems from Japan. They've been around for like forty years. Very proven, they're high-tech systems with about five plus step processing that are capable of producing a range of excellent. Levels of affluent qualities that some countries use to water their home landscapes. Or even deposit back into the rivers and streams where children play. To give you an example of their effectiveness, systems like these are immense improvement to the low-tech septic systems we currently use. That we know are deteriorating together with the asbestos and unstable old sewer lines. We also know are deter- deteriorating and could probably be causing more damage than septic sys- systems and leaching fields. As Mr. Duane has pointed out, in a, in, in two thousand and ten, we submitted our treatment systems application to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. In conjunction with Weary, Water Environmental Research Institute uh team, named, namely led by Dr. Joseph Ross. Professor of Water Resources Engineering under We- Weary. He was the Guam sewage expert within the Weary team prior to his unfortunate and very sad in passing last year on August seventeen, two thousand and nineteen. I keep him in mind as I write this today, as, as I was writing it last night. Uh, to our legislative leaders and representatives, I ask that before you consider this bill, you look into and consider the options that will help improve our current wastewater treatment systems. To protect our aquifer, before you consider restricting or. Before you consider restrictions that will curb development and make the dream of owning a home even more difficult to attain for our local families. And everyone dreaming of living here. I stay in Gigo, I've been affected by this all my life. Uh, we all agree a need, we, we all agree the need to protect our aquifer is paramount. It's very personal to me and we should all look into options to do that. Groundwater protection zone area you identify affects most populated areas of Guam, known as areas from. I've always understood it to be Gigo to Chalampago, coast to coast. It's a huge area. And it, obviously, it affects the most probable areas for development and what we've been seeing, right? So I have several recommendations, and although I am not sure if this is the proper forum, I'm just gonna bring it up and, and we can discuss it. I would like to write some solutions that I believe will help. Been nine years, like I said, we're working with Dr. Ross. Things have gone through, uh, we've come over various solutions. I've talked with uh Dr. Urbana there too, and of course, Dr. Jensen uh through the years. And Dr. Denton and, and a, and a bunch of the team. So first and foremost, it is my hope and recommendation, you consider funding and instituting a local team. To look into the various optional systems such as onsite treatment systems. Obviously, I'm biased to this. And establish a deadline to provide solutions to the community, rather than consider removing established compassionate. Options for families such as the preventive parental subdivision law. My families have all taken advantage and have benefited from the parental subdivision law. And it has really helped to provide homes to, to family members. It is our findings that a great percentage of the septic systems also are not working and act more like cesspools. Rather than septic systems that, that deposit into leaching fields. And steps to correct this are certainly needed if we are to affect the, the protection of our aquifer most effectively. Um, I forget who mentioned it earlier, I think Dr. Urbana, you mentioned, um, you, you've heard about. Basically, septic tanks being built throughout the many, many years and baccos come in and they make holes or they do whatever. And, and so we know that the integrity of septic tanks aren't there. Dr. Ross and I were very, very familiar with this. We saw it firsthand, we see it firsthand, I've experienced it a number of times. And um, the percentage of, of, of septic tanks that we've inspected, I think we've had like a fifty percent failure rate on septic systems. So before we start looking at, just at, and thinking what the problem is, I think you gotta look, probably might need to look a little deeper. It is also a finding that um, much of the sewer lines have deteriorated to a point that existing pipes have eroded and are, and are no, no longer intact. Um, this is just something that I'm aware of. Uh, I think we all. And, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but in, in Agania as an example, the sewer lines, the, the construction on the roads. Are actually due to uh sewer lines that have eroded and are no, actually no longer there. So we have raw sewage running through caverns. In, in our island. And I think before we start saying we're gonna extend the sewer lines, I think we actually. You see, we gotta fix the, the, the existing ones and maybe even look at other options, like, like I'm mentioning. Um, in this case, I would like to um ask if a study has been completed. That certainly or clearly established the impact of these leaking sewer lines throughout the island. That are very likely above our aquifer and are pro- and are possibly leaking raw sewage. It is very possible that these leaking sewer lines may be causing more damage to the aquifer than septic tanks. As we know, the volume of lea- of a leaking or damaged sewer line has the ability to percolate. A far greater volume of raw sewage, we're talking millions of gallons in comparison to the septic tanks and leaching fields. They should also look into the current septic systems insulation process, and this is to ensure integrity. To en- sure those septic systems are installed properly and are without leakage, to ensure they work properly. We can expect that if they are working properly, they are not providing the effectiveness, I'm sorry. We can expect that if they are not working properly, they are not providing the effectiveness it was designed to provide. So, could it be that these faults are the, are the, are the culprit? These are a few solutions and options that should be considered before you consider affecting development, in my opinion, for families like mine. And I hope you will look into these critical items before considering approving this bill. We hope you will be more compassionate to the many families and persons this bill will affect. That this bill will have a known and factual negative impact on development and should be delayed until you have exhausted all other options. To elaborate on the unnecessary impact this bill will have, I ask that you all think about how difficult it already is to obtain a home in Guam. Creating more restrictions and a lesser supply of available properties without exhausting all other options is unacceptable for, for many reasons. You must visualize the fact that many with little property will lose what they own, as their property values will decrease. And may longer, no longer be developable based on this bill's restriction as is, as I know it and read it. Those incapable of holding on to their property after being unable to develop it. And land bank it will lose to those with financial power. That's a lot of our locals. The property investments made by families that are completed and ongoing, I'm, I'm, I have one ongoing as well. For parental subdivisions, for our children will be void and they extend from Gigo to Chalampago. So you have to imagine how many people this is affecting. Well, and that obviously affecting and robbing them of their plans and dreams. It is imperative that you do not approve this bill haphazardly before you consider other options and improvements. I ask that you vote no on this bill as other responsible steps have not been taken. As a result of this hearing, you can take your fiduciary steps to protect our aquifer while also protecting the families. By helping provide more options for them. Thank you for the opportunity and, and be safe.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Ms. Gina Campus. Now am I having this and you'll be followed by Ted Nelson. Ms. Gina, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Senators and the public and everyone concerned who has tuned in. Um, you know, I wanna explain this in the simplest way I, I know and, and. Because this is how I understand it in reading the law. I am sure that there might be existing issues with aquifer. But this law is only serving to eliminate parental subdivisions. A family's ability to subdivide. So in a parental subdivision, and, and the people from GWA and EPA have testified that right now. The law exists that if you are in an unsued area, which is pretty much from Chalampago, you take the line. From Pago Bay and you draw it across the island to Peti. And in those areas, if you don't have sewer, you can build on an half acre lot and put in a septic tank. Or if a family is able to per- do a parental subdivision, you could do a quarter acre lot. For the purpose of giving that property to your family member, to your children, basically, that's what the law says, to your children. I, as a parent, will be able to subdivide my one acre into four parcels. If other provisions of the law allow it to be cut up into four. And then I could give three of those lots to my children. And I can use the parental law to enable me to still build homes. My children could build homes on those quarter acre lots. And that's what the law allows now. This law will say no, now you can only do half acre parcels. So now my one acre lot, I can no longer cut it up into four and give it to my children. I have to only cut it up into two. That's essentially what this law does. That's all it does. And I know the, the argument is we're doing this to protect the aquifer. This law will not protect the aquifer. There are other means that need to be addressed. I heard Doctor, Doctor Jensen. Respond that nitrate is an end product of the biological cycle. Biological cycle could include the decay of vegetation. It could include a lot of other things. This law doesn't address any of it. It only eliminates a family's ability to subdivide their parcels. And give it to more than, than one or two children. That's it. That's all it does. There's a lot of issues and, and I think, you know, I, I asked Senator Lee. What prompted this particular problem? And, and, and I don't know if it's just the protection of the aquifer. I think, you know, there's a lot of issues at stake here and one of them is. Our locals are having a, a really difficult time finding affordable housing. This law isn't going to solve it, nor do I think it, that it will solve the aquifer issue that's at hand. And just listening to people at EPA and listening to Dr. Jensen and, and other people that have testified. I don't think this law is gonna solve your aquifer issue or protect it. I think all it will do is hurt the families. That have been using parental subdivision to be able to distribute more properties to more of their children. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share my, my testimony.
Thank you, Gina. Um, Mr. Ted Nelson, um, I know you should be, uh, still see you there, Ted. Mr. Nelson, um, if not, we'll come back to you. I will move on to Mr. John. Oh, there you go, Ted. You're up, Ted. I gotta unmute first. Unmute first, Ted.
I've listened to the testimony of Dr. Jensen, Dr. Nathan and uh Guam Water Works and all that. I appreciate Gina Campus and Pimo Peak Demian for having the same view as I do. Based on listening to Dr. Jensen, I find it ironic that all of a sudden with all these experts and scientific data and all that. That all of a sudden, landowners, septic tanks become the culprit of contamination. You know, the livelihood of these people will be destroyed. No, I know many family members that are not within the range of sewer and all that throughout the island, many families. That give their children land and they're going to the banks. Just imagine them trying to go to the banks now. You know, you prohibit this, what would do to the value of the property they're trying to build? Or will the banks approve them? You talk about contamination, I listen to Dr. Jensen, there's a lot of ifs. You know, why, with all the studies, I find it ironic that they introduce legislation to make. Landowners and septic tank the main culprit of all this. I disagree with Simon. Yeah, they have a plan. We rate payers have to suck it up. You know, you're going to incur more costs. I disagree with that. We are all struggling, people are struggling. I know a lot of families that are struggling. I'm talking as a citizen, I'm also a realtor. And I see people trying to go to the banks and right now with all the. All the policy implemented for water and everything. It's very difficult for families to come up with extra money to try to do anything at all. On their own admission, they just focus on this one thing, septic tank, private landowners as the main culprit. You know, when you look at Jiggo, why don't they go way back in the eighties as Dr. Nathan mentioned? The marble wells, that thing was highly contaminated. The old Marble Annex Wilson Home, that was shut down years ago. But we're not able to look at that. The golf courses that were built, did they even try to monitor over the year or do studies to see if they contribute to the contamination? Of the water lens up north? As Dr. Jensen mentioned, the aquifer, there's cracks that go from Anderson all the way. Has there been any study outside Anderson where we're not allowed to go and to monitor outside or dig wells to see if contamination is leaking out through? Especially now with the major development on base? You know, the people are hurting right now. I understand this, but for them to ironically last minute all of a sudden introduce this legislation, we are people. People are struggling. People want to build their homes. I agree with Mr. Damian, there's other alternatives, other solutions. There's laws in place that are ready. Made for these type of things, quarter acre and all that like Gina mentioned. You know, you can't, you can't put the burden on the people and their families that are struggling. It's very hard. We can't, a lot of people can't go to these big subdivisions in Jiggo. That are bought out by outside investors that are incorporated on Guam to sell their 400 square meter lots. For four or 500,000, I'm sorry, people can't afford that. Middle income class people are no longer middle class people. You know, the main thing here, I wish they did a massive study on our sewer like David mentioned. You know, our sewer system was built since 1976 with Ricky Bedaliu. We've had many, many problems, even Dr. Jensen's admission, all typhoons and all that. The sewers come out all over. Just imagine by the time they clean out all that mess, what the contaminants that go down. You see it all throughout the island, Pago Bay, Chalampago, Baragada, Jiggo. You know, for them to isolate the people. You know, as I find it very sad and ironic. You know, and you know, the lives and the livelihood of these families that are going to be destroyed. From this pismo legislation that will not assist the people of Guam and putting the burden and the blame on landowners. Who want to go to financial institutions, you know what's going to happen to them if this is made law? The banks are not going to accept them. I wish they did really do more, like Jensen said, we haven't done conclusive studies on other factors, negative factors that contribute. To the level of nitrate and contamination. I wish they had done more studies. I wish they focused on the next five to 10 years. Like Simon said, we have a plan. They better start thinking about. These large subdivisions are hooked up to sewer. They better start thinking about our sewer system. Right now, because in five, 10 years, you don't know what's going to happen. Like David mentioned, there's a lot of leaks we don't know about. You know, to burden the people of Guam, I find it ironic and sad. I wish they did more conclusive research because. From Dr. Jensen's and Dr. Nathan's remarks, I find. Find their study still inconclusive. One researcher had to go back to Florida, whatever, where they went. You know, I wish they looked deeper into the problem before they penalized and hurt the people of Guam. They're the experts. Don't isolate it to one thing. Septic tank, that is, that is, you're going to hurt the people of Guam, you're going to devalue the property to nothing. They will be forced to sell it in such a depressed market. And a lot of our people, that's why 40, 50, 60% of our people have taken off from Guam. We can't, we can't afford the price of plants in 20 years. And yeah, rate payers get ready because we're going to suck it up. I disagree. We are rate payers, but we are people struggling. I wish our government to be more consumer friendly and more adhering to. All locals, I don't care what their race is that want to build and make things better. I wish they focus in the next, do a plan and study our sewer system because that is the main problem. I wish they did a study in the impact of the closing of marble wells in the back road. But that, I haven't heard anything since they closed it down militarily. That well affected the aquifer, like Dr. Jensen said. Aquifers, they have cracks and they seep into the other wells and all that. I wish they do more thorough study before pushing this into legislation that will destroy family economically and all their livelihoods and their future. A lot of people will leave because they can't afford living in Guam. I submitted written testimony, I agree with Pimo David Demian and Mrs. Gina Campus. I am against this legislation. I wish there'll be more thorough research on other negative factors that are contributing. To the high level or increase, decrease and all their graphs and everything. To find what is the culprit, what is the real source of the problem instead of penalizing the landowners and people? Why keep hurting the people? That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. I respect everybody. Take care.
Thank you, Ted. Now we move to John Duinas. Mr. John, yours should be short, I guess.
Yeah, I'll try to make it short. I think, thank you very much, Mr. Nelson. I think you really provided testimony with some passion behind it. Let me just say in passing that this one half acre rule that everybody's playing to is really arbitrary. I mean, somebody had an idea that if you restrict lot sizes to a half acre. I guess population would be less dense. But why not 0.49 acres? Why not two thirds of an acre? Why not a third of an acre? So it's arbitrary. So let's just get that, let's just understand that. The half acre is arbitrary. The second thing is, the aquifer is not a monolithic. Entity. It is composed of different types of aquifers. You have in Jiggo, you have the perch waterlands. That's quite different from the aquifer that is in and around Ganya. There are portions of the aquifer that actually where it's fresh water floating on salt water. And there are parts of the aquifer where the water actually sits on top of volcanics. So I think your policies should reflect the type of aquifer that will be affected by. By sources of pollution. For example, if you wanted to prevent contamination of wells in Ganya. Yes, the thickness of the aquifer is quite thin compared to the. The aquifer or the overburden in Jiggo. So look at that before you actually pass this. Law that affects all properties within the northern area. The second thing is, the minimum lot size for a parental subdivision is 7,200 square feet. I don't know where EPA got this idea that it was 19,200. It's 7,200 square feet. I believe Gina is correct, it's like a quarter acre. Or a third of an acre. That's about right. Some of the other things that I noticed. You really have to be careful, Dr. Banner, of making projections based on straight line. Projections, looking at data, I mean, I've done that many times in my life. You know, you have two points, you connect a straight line to it and then you take that and you go 10 years beyond that. And you calculate something that's really theoretical. So you have to be careful. Really, it's not a straight line relationship. So rather than read my testimony, I agree because what my testimony is not in support of this bill. It's really against the bill. And that is the findings that Senator Bisco Lee put in her bill. Is not really, doesn't really make a direct correlation to parental subdivisions using septic tanks and leaching field. Now, I wanted to show you something. I guess EPA would be familiar with this. This is your manual. And this is. The individual wastewater system regulations. It tells you how to build your septic tank, what kind of septic tank. The distance from a septic tank leaching field to a well, to a river and all that. If this is followed, I mean, that would minimize quite a bit of problems associated with septic tanks. We can't just head into this assuming that. Half or most of septic tanks aren't constructed properly. That is part of the permitting process. You submit a septic tank leaching field plan. You have percolation tests and all this goes into your site plan. When you apply for a building permit, that site plan is reviewed and it goes through Guam EPA reviews and you approve it. Now, if somebody builds a septic tank and then busts a hole in it, well, that's not permitted. So part of this process is the inspection process. You really have to inspect what they put at the ground, particularly in northern Guam where that could be an issue. Rather than the residents of Guam. Waiting for Guam EP or for Guam Water Works to extend sewer license to their area. Before they, you, before people consider building. This is what I recommend, maybe this in terms of how this issue of having nitrates in our groundwater. Related to septic tanks and leaching fields can be handled. I understand that there are a lot of residences that are in septic tank or septic tank and leaching fields. That are very close to sewer and can connect to sewer. Those, you know, the efforts to enforce connection to sewer should be first and foremost. Now, people can't hook up because they need to get a loan, then of course, extend that loan program. But I suspect a lot of people can hook up to sewer, they're just not being forced to hook up to sewer. So look at the enforcement aspect of it. The other aspect is developments. Large developments actually. Are forced to connect to sewer or put in their own collection system as part of their land use permit. The entire community of Ladi Heights was that way. They had to build their own sewer system and connect to sewer. So really what we're doing, and I think Ted Nelson pointed this out, we're really taking this. This mission, which is really a mission in search of a problem. And taking it all the way down to parental subdivision of 7,200 square feet. And denying the use of that particular property that's not close to sewer and cannot connect to sewer. There are a lot of lots out there that have already been created by this parental subdivision program. As soon as you pass this law, those lots are worthless. I mean, people can't build on it. They won't be able to get a loan to build anything on it because it's against the law. How about those lots that are already developed that are in septic tank and leaching fields? What happens to those lots? I know they're grandfathered in. But when they sell that property and somebody tries to get financing. Will then that property be non-conforming? So there are a lot of unintended consequences to this. Legislation. I think you ought to consider those consequences. Unintended consequences before you pass something sweeping like this. So yes. Those residences that have septic tanks and leaching fields that can connect to sewer. Force them to connect to sewer. If you look at areas where there are concentration, you mentioned there are areas with. Concentration of septic tanks and leaching fields will target that area for sewer extension. I mean, instead of just saying we are going to be putting in 5,000 linear feet of sewer in northern Guam, well. You know, put those sewers where they can achieve maximum effect.
Do you have anything else, John?
No, I guess that's it. I mean, I think again, I think this is a mission in search of a problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dennis. But I just wanted to advise everybody that if you follow the, and I understand everybody's statement so far. I didn't see in the bill that says you cannot subdivide, so please just go over the bill one more time and. And then submit your additional testimony if you have anything. But moving on to Dennis, I saw you, where did he go? There you are, Dennis.
Hi, good morning, Senators. My name is Dennis Balakas. I'm a professional land surveyor. For Guam Surveyor LLC, the president of the Guam Society. Of professional land surveyors, and I also serve as adjunct faculty at the engineering program at the University of Guam. Thank you very much for hearing me today regarding Bill 404-35. As a professional land surveyor, I am directly involved in the creation and processing. Of subdivisions in Guam, including parental subdivisions. We as professional land surveyors are the first ones consulted when landowners. Want to know how a bill like 404-35 affects them. My written testimony contains more detail. But I do want to cover a few short points. Bill 404-35 states that the parental subdivision is being used to escape the requirement to connect to public sewer. That is incorrect. I can tell you in practically all the parental subdivisions that I've done for landowners. It is because the sewer is very far away or the terrain is incompatible with sewer. If there is sewer even remotely close to the property, the landowners want to connect to it. And they make a great effort to do so. And that is the number one question I get asked when they subdivide property. Where is the sewer? I usually have to tell them to go to GWA. If I don't know where the sewer is, we have to verify the sewer. When we do go do our subdivisions and if there is sewer there, owners want it. But not if it's too far away and too cost ineffective to make the property. To make the property affordable. So quite a few people have made the points that I would have made, but I would like to point to some of the things I mentioned in my written testimony. Because many families could not afford to purchase property by themselves, they would have to partner with another. They have partnered with another family or party and buy one together. In the hopes of being able to have enough money in the future to subdivide it. A lot of them bought that property 20 years ago. With the understanding that the property subdivision laws would not change. If you do change this, they will, they're essentially forbidden from subdividing their property. So you have a lot of these half acre lots in Jiggo, that it though, Chalampago, they bought property together. And with this law, they will not be able to subdivide it and get separate clear title for it. And it will also not allow them to build their own homes on it. So that is a negative effect. It basically destroys their property value because what, they could have two lots before. And now they can only have one lot. So basically, one family's investment in that property is essentially destroyed. Now, the other thing is that Bill four oh four three five will forbid the building of houses and subdivisions done for probate purposes. Because it is a court ordered subdivision, these subdivisions create lot sizes smaller than half an acre. So that's another way that it affects small property owners. And these are not people who have a lot of money to subdivide the property. They they are often a lot of family members. And it affects them and it basically, like I said, it basically destroys their property value. And these are properties that they've saved up and they're trying to give to their children. Okay, so it doesn't affect just parental subdivisions. It affects probate subdivisions. Now, what I noted is that Bill four oh four dash three five. Does allow an exception for you to subdivide the property and build. Build facilities on the property if you give it to the children. But. Based on the wording of the law, it doesn't seem like it allows the parent. To build a house on the property after they've given it to their children. Or on the remainder portion of the property that they keep to themselves. So that's another way that I don't know if you guys intended that. But that's how it affects it. Now. The other thing is that Bill four oh four three five also forbids septic tanks and properties that cannot be solved. Cannot be served by sewer due to terrain conditions. I'm talking about. Properties where the lot is under the sewer in terms of elevation. The only way to. Install sewer on these properties is to basically have a pump station. And that is a really large cost to a lot of property owners. They cannot afford that. So some of from some of the statements here, I don't get the impression that the parental subdivisions. And the current structure itself are causing the contamination of the water aquifer. It could be a lot of variety of factors, but there's not any definitive. Notion that says absolutely the contamination of the nitrates. By the nitrates into the Guam Water Protection Zone. Is caused by the amount of development in this areas. So. To eliminate, to cause the damage to these properties just by this law on uncertain. Inference, I don't know if that's what we want to do. So there are other restrictions that affect landowners in very destructive ways, but I want to talk about the bills in ten. So the problem would essentially be solved if you install more sewer in the area. If you want more sewer in the area. The best way to approach it is to use small investors to do it. They want to connect to the sewer, they just can't afford it if it's too far away. The best way to do that is if you create a system where they they want to connect to sewer. They're not trying to escape, a lot of these parental subdivisions are not trying to escape the sewer requirement. They're trying to escape Guam Land Use Commission. It takes years to get a subdivision approved. For from one land use commission, they can't afford that, they want to build, they want to be able to build right now. While they have the money. They can't afford to go have an engineering study, get permission from the fire station, police, EPA. Department of Land Management and all that, these are all this, these are all the things blocking them from installing sewer into these properties. It's not because there's they're trying to not connect to sewer, it's because. They're trying to not have to go through two, three years process because of one land use commission. If you streamline that process, they will install sewer. If you had a streamlined process where they could subdivide ten properties. Requiring sewer. And it doesn't have to go through Guam Guam Land Use Commission, they will install sewer, they'll go out of their way for it. And then the other properties in the area will go install sewer on their own because it increases their property value. So if you want my suggestion as to how to. Protect the Guam Water Aquifer, do that, create and streamline the process. To subdivide property. With sewer, because otherwise, because right now, if you try to subdivide the property, you want sewer in there. You can't do it cost effectively. If you go through Guam Land Use Commission. So thank you very much. I think I think we all want to protect. The Guam Water Aquifer here, but at the same time, I don't wanna, as a land surveyor. I deal with a lot of small investors. And I don't want to see them hurt, and I know that there's a big swath of people. Okay, they're gonna come into my office and they have properties in Jigo, Chalpago, Dedido. And the first thing I'm gonna tell them is you can't do it. You can't do it because of this law. Even if you're able to subdivide it, what's the point of doing it if you can't build a property on it? They're not gonna do it, why would they? Why would they spend the twenty five hundred dollars for a parental subdivision? If they can't build on it, there's no point. So what will happen is that rich investors will come in and swoop their property and do it for them. And they'll they'll have to sell it to them. They'll lose their money, they'll be like, well, I can't do anything with this property, I'm paying taxes on it, it's costing me money, I have to get rid of it. So their their forty thousand dollars in investment that they paid for the property. They just have to get rid of it. So they lose that money. And I don't want to see them hurt by that. So that's that's how I'm interested in it. And if you could please put them to your consideration, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dennis, Ronald Loguana, I'll go next.
I'll get that. After day. Just my seal Mr. Chairline, on I understand opportunity done. Wow. My heart rate just went. Down as a result of that. You know, Dennis, that is mind blowing information. And I'm glad that the senators are listening and I I my hat's off. To Senator Telotidig for for at least saying let's sit down and have a round table. And it started out with also Senator Trelawney, Senator Trelawney. You gave me some light there when you started questioning. As well as Senator James Moylan, and it's a good, good thing that you guys are are really looking at this because. First of all, I am not in support, it's the bottom line. And I echo all the other. Other testimonies, most particular Mr. Ted Nelson and Mr. Duñez and Mr. Demyon. And I foresee also this compost and Mrs. Liz Duñez. And the others that are forthcoming because the others that were speaking in favor were all bureaucrats. And I wish this Senator Luis Munea was here because during our last public hearing. She said that the government doesn't run the people. It's the people that run this government. And man. Those are powerful words and you know, I'm just saying because I too am gonna be affected by this and I have a property that. Is a Senónia that's. Right there with a pipeline there, that's even worse, a Navy pipeline that. So we're already having enough problems with that, but you know, the scientific. Evidence that they're talking about are. I wrote down a list of words. That a common individual person like me can understand. First of all, they said it was complicated. I don't know, a lot leads to be done. Maybe. We have our limitations of our knowledge. Here say. For goodness. I think these are just very inconclusive and that as there is. Tracing mechanism to directly link these these leakages, the nitrogen. As a result of the septic tanks and then most popular saying that I heard there was. Now, Dr. Jensen, now we are working with GWA. And EPA now. I mean, now we're getting hit. As a result of them not doing their. Compliance work, EPA is the bottom line responsible person. I'm an agency for this, you know, there are laws in place and they and they just could need to go out and 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 follow. And do let go out and monitor if people are in compliance. And bringing it back to the research, another word was Mr. Dr. Urbana. Based on the simulations. For goodness sakes, like we're playing. Video games. This is not something, you know, I'm a member, was a was a member of the ancestral lands commission for a while and. And we're giving out these lands to our people and like. Mr. Black says, you know, it's it's going to hurt our people. And it's this is like another pandemic, if you do this, it will just hit the pockets of our people. And I think we need to just make sure. That we do the right thing, I'm not against any. I'm not against the nonprotection of our waterlands because of course it's very important, but. The mere fact that I did that attend the training with weary and one fact I know is that the military wells. We have no information regarding those matters. That's for sure, military based properties, they run their own system. And I'm not sure if they're working together now with the local EPA. Or Water Works, but I am just. Not in support of this and I would echo all the. The testimony from the others because this is just going to put a burden on our people, we have thirty five thousand people unemployed. And it's just gonna make it even more harder for these people that live out there and those sticks, and I'm one of them. We have properties out there that we can't even get our sewage system hooked up there. And I'm just concerned for our people and that's me, I'm an advocate for our people. And we need to just. Take care of our people the right and the proper way, let's just not put any more burden on them. As it is right now with this legislation, so I am not in support of this bill four oh four thirty five, this is my see.
Thank you, Ronald, now we have we have Claire Delgado followed by Ray Haddock, I'm looking for Ray, but I know I saw Claire, so Claire, I guess Ray won't be here probably. If you can, please.
Good morning, almost afternoon, everybody, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I I'm gonna keep my testimony relatively short, there was a lot of really good conversation back and forth, but. As a member of the Guam Association of Realtors, I'm going to present our testimony. The bill in its current form. We feel needs revision and we want to be one of the stakeholders when when it. Has to do with discussion on this important issue, even from the beginning with any legislation. Having to do with real estate matters, homeownership matters, anything of the like. We've always wanted to become stakeholders in any discussion prior to. Legislation being drafted and and being a part of the round table. So let me let me just say this, the efforts to protect and preserve Guam's natural water source, especially within the groundwater protection zone. Is critical, we we understand that, we 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 know that. As it affects Guam's future and we do applaud the intentions to do so. However, what is also critical is a pursuit of homeownership. The Guam Association of Realtors are strong advocates for this right. Shelter, as you know, is one of the three fundamental needs in addition to food and clothing. While we're all stewards of this island, we cannot ignore. The desires of families who want to develop their property or their land nor providing assistance to them when they ask us or they seek it from us. As you know, one of the biggest challenges is in building a home is providing infrastructure. Costs can run up as exorbitantly high. Possibly more to connect to a sewer line, which in and of itself needs upgrading. Not to mention the cost of other utilities, construction, labor and the like. And for this reason, buyers look for ready built homes as opposed to building from ground up. So with that, this leaves the majority of new construction homes, new construction bills to developers. Home prices on Guam also continue to rise, making it more difficult for our residents to purchase homes. And especially in this present time, assistance in making infrastructure more affordable should be. Really looked into, I I do want to note that I was. I want to commend GWA, actually, I was happy to hear that they're working with developers on this, looking to. You know, as far as assistance for connecting to sewer lines or infrastructure. And you know, we look forward to hearing more of that in the short future. Part of Bill four oh four states that prohibition on further use of septic tanks in the GPZ. Is necessary in light of the fact that some owners of real property and I'll paraphrase is circumventing the general rule depending on the size of one's lot. Of the parental subdivision rule. This bill should have passed may have unintended consequences for those families who have land that has been passed from generation to generation. Or the parent that wishes to divide it to divide their own lots among their children. And want to develop their own and have a family compound or something similar, so it might prevent them from doing so. Even if they were to follow the parental subdivision law in its original intent, but may no longer have the means to do so. Also, an unintended consequence may be landowners who, even though they're grandfathered in. May not be able to sell their land in the future, so we want, you know. If the bill is intended to address circumventing the parental subdivision law, then you know, maybe it's time that we have a round table to discuss that. Having a round table discussion with all stakeholders is vital. To obtain as much information as possible in order to create bills that not only address the concerns. But have vital input to create responsible and effective legislation. While we do want to maintain our our maintain and protect and preserve our water source, we also want to also. Let it be known that we must also preserve the pursuit of homeownership. So with that. Again, Bill four oh four has good intentions, but we suggest that revisions be made and or be considered. To continue working to protect Guam's natural water resource, but also help those families. Develop the land as they desire, so with that, I will sign it as myself. Claire Delgado, Guam Association Realtors and Sean Blas, President-elect, thank you, and I'll send in my testimony.
Thank you, Claire, now we'll have. Ms. Liz Duñez. You're the last of of the list, thank you.
Senators, thank you for having us, this is to address, I'm a local, I've been here all my life, I have no intentions of moving. And yes, our groundwater or water source is is important and critical to our our locals and. You know, those have been here for many years as well, but I speak. As one of the locals and I know many of the locals are listening in. But I am a product of parental subdivisions. My parents purchased property and subdivided them to provide for just imagine eleven of their children. Parental subdivisions gave us each an opportunity to build our first home. Or in some cases, some of them sold and now are living stateside. But this is up in Jigo, just like Dave Demian, his family is originally from Jigo and so is my family. My parents worked hard to put together their savings and even worked extra jobs just to make this happen for their family. Parental subdivisions give local landowners. The opportunity to provide property for their descendants and the possibility of homeownership. Which is the dream for every American and every Guamanian. Land in Guam is limited, yes. Balance is required, but this affects the people. Each and every one of you legislators were sworn to serve. My parents worked so hard that when my dad died in nineteen seventy seven, my mom lived off the real estate to this day. She just celebrated her eighty fourth birthday a few days ago. And now she's requiring to liquidate some of these properties so that she could live the remaining days comfortably. This bill, if passed, would affect her ability to sell these properties. And even maybe she may want to build on it, this bill is just another layer. Of bureaucracy on regulations and laws that are already in place. As a Realtor, you know, I've helped so many people sell their properties and liquidate. So what do I tell them when they need to retire and they need to sell? And this bill affects their ability to do what they need to do with their property, it just. Puts in heavier limitations and renders their property value useless. Now, there if there is a threat to polluting the aquifer. And the type two facilities. Then the bill should target the extension of sewer systems and on sewer areas. You know, I remember years ago, Dave Demian and I had a conversation. He had an alternative water waste system. So I said terrific, I'd like to look at it because there are properties on the island that. that may not fit the category of the regulation. So we were talking about solutions. What can we do to solve this work? Uh, a landowner can build on the property because they can't get sewer, they can't put in the septic tank. What are the solutions? So he came up with something. I think that was like eight or nine years ago. And he brought that to Guam EPA. He didn't bring this up, but I'm bringing it up because what's the point in coming up with solutions? Waste water solutions would may even more effective than septic tanks and leaching field. But what happened? What did the government do with it? You know, it's, they took it, they may review it, Dave. I don't know. And it went out the window. They probably didn't, um, review it properly. So I mean, it's so sad that as in the private sector, we each have to figure ways to make things happen, especially now with the pandemic. You know, businesses are dying on the vine, but it's the private businesses that are figuring solutions. I mean, John and I took a trip one, down to Australia one year. There is solution that converts wastewater into drinking water, guys. We're behind the time and we're not looking at new technology to help solve the problem. The private sector will have the, the solution, but the government does not listen, nor do they want to do anything about it. So anyway, I'm just, it's, it's just frustrating from the private sector who is trying to survive and to find solutions to make things happen. It'll be wonderful if there's a collaborative effort that not only us in the private sector are trying to make things happen and come up with solutions. So as Claire puts it, let's collaborate. We're stakeholders. It's the people of Guam that need this. You can't cut it off and affect all of us. So I speak for the people. Come on, guys. Yes, there is a problem, but let's come up with solutions rather than ramrodding something that has unintended consequences. Thank you. Sisma Asi.
Uh, thank you, Liz. Um, now we're at the tail end. Um, there's no one else to testify as the, um, the, uh, author of the bill to, uh, provide her closing statements on Bill four oh four dash thirty-five so we can wrap this up. We're beyond almost one hour. All right. Senator Lee, thank you.
Sisma Asi, Mr. Chair, and I really want to thank everyone who's provided testimony today. It's been very helpful for us and um, we're looking forward to reviewing all of this and, and working with the chairman going forward. And I'm really grateful to be here today. I'm really thankful, um, for all of your feedback. And Mr. Chair, Bill four oh four is just one byproduct of the months of work between our office and the experts in this field. And I'm really thankful to have the support of these committed public servants of scientists and legal experts um, who contributed to the research, drafting, uh, and all these presentations of this measure and other pieces of legislation that will protect our aquifer, uh, for years to come. Mr. Chair, my daughters, like most of our children, are taking classes online. And a lot of times that means I get to hear the Inafresi pledge by our children every day. Who freshen my sedzu, para ba hu protehi, zanu defendi. These words have meaning when we say them. It shouldn't be an empty promise. And I really appreciate again, everyone who's testified today. I will take all of the suggestions and concerns on board with an open mind in order to accomplish the goals of Bill four oh four with the least amount of harm possible. But Mr. Chair, I'd like to reiterate a few main points about this measure. One, this bill applies the same restriction that every other landowner over the GPZ has to follow. It gets rid of one exception that is causing faster and further pollution to the aquifer. Two, this bill will not eliminate anyone's ability to subdivide their land. It will only apply the same restrictions for septic tanks that everyone else has to follow. You can still subdivide your one acre parcel into four equal lots. The only change is whether Guam EPA can grant you the exemption to install a septic tank afterwards. Um, third, Mr. Chair, the protections found in contracts clause means that no landowner who has a lawful agreement to build a septic tank before this law is enacted will be penalized. And I'm happy to work with legal bureau to make sure that this is very, very clear in our law. Um, so I just want to reiterate, everyone who is playing by today's rules will be grandfathered in. Um, and then fourth, once contamination is widespread in our aquifer, there's no going back. Land values will plummet, not just for those who want parental subdivisions, but for everyone. Land rates will plummet or land values will plummet. Water rates will skyrocket. And you know, prior to the pandemic, we really all relied on tourism as one of our main economic drivers. Tourists aren't gonna want to come here if our water is contaminated. The best and brightest residents won't want to live here. That's the big picture that this measure is considering first and foremost. This measure is being proposed to protect the lives of our people. Studies show that the nitrates these septic tanks leak pose health risks to vulnerable, vulnerable groups like pregnant women and infants. But this bill also considers the health of one of Guam's most important resources, our aquifer. To borrow a phrase from the past, in essence, we're talking about preventing hanumtaqui. I honestly think that living through that period of unsafe drinking water once was, was more than enough. Mr. Chair, there's a, there's a theory that our island's name Guam is derived from guaha ham, meaning we have. It's a poignant reminder that within the Pacific and maybe even the world, this tiny speck of land just happens to be everything that we need to grow century after century. Whether you believe it was by chance or by divine design, the bountiful blessings we have attracted tribes and empires to this very island since people first began exploring what was beyond their horizons. And we, who are fortunate enough and privileged enough to inherit this place, should be true stewards of what makes Guam so unique. One of the best and most special things that we have is this perfect system of limestone filtered water. This is the reason that more than a hundred and sixty thousand people can live here. And hopefully someday soon, you know, we can have our one point five million visitors, um, vacationing here. It'll be one of the main reasons that we can grow further into the future. But once our aqua, aquifer is contaminated, the cost to produce that much drinking water will completely disrupt everything. A decrease in available drinking water will shrink our economy. It will shrink sustainable population levels. We could have GWA's version of load shedding. Rates could rise enough to cause a generational brain drain and we could gain a reputation among tourists as, as having dirty, unsafe tap water. Mr. Chair, in closing, you know, I want to acknowledge that some naysayers will call, will call these warnings very dramatic. But the people of Flint, Michigan know too well that this is not an impossible future. Their families couldn't brush their teeth or bathe without bottled water. Its government had to pay for replacement or infrastructure citywide. But if we continue to step up protections on this awesome resource that we have on Guam today, acknowledging that it has been gift, given to us, gifted to us, then we don't have to live through this. Mr. Chair, keeping it viable will mean that Guam can continue to provide her people with what we need for thousands of years to come. Sisma Asi.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Uh, there being, uh, no other individuals to testify, um, on this bill. The committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days following this hearing for the acceptance of any and will accept any information on, on the public testimony on the agenda as I've discussed. Uh, you may submit your testimony to my email at Senator Joe Essenovsin at gmail dot com. In closing, again, I want to thank everyone for attending the virtual public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. Virtual public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is twelve oh two. Please stay safe, wash your hands, wear masks, practice social distancing. And Sisma Asi, have a nice day. Thank you.